That Mr. Garcetti, we carefully worded the suggestion or amendment that you had, and let's see at the end of the day if we can make this happen. And for those that think that this died in committee, it didn't die.
Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
That I have been a great. Thank you.
And joining us now is Ed Boakes, General Manager for the Department of Animal Services. Mr. Boakes, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Jack, it's my pleasure.
For those who didn't get a chance to see your confirmation hearings here on Channel 35, you have a long and extensive background in animal care. Tell us a little bit about it, Julie.
Well, I've been involved in animal welfare for, oh, going on about 30 years. Started in, well, it actually started in my hometown, Harper Woods, Michigan, where I worked as a vet tech. And moved to Arizona, where I worked up through the ranks, starting in an entry-level position, and eventually became the Executive Director. And, well, at the same time, I was also a pastor and a principal of a private school. So my career is somewhat varied, and also worked as an organizational development person. So I found that all of those skills come together rather uniquely in this position and helped me tremendously. And after serving a number of years in Maricopa County, which is the Phoenix area of Arizona, I was recruited by the Mayor of New York City, Mayor Bloomberg, to come there and try to replicate some of the programs. And they were so successful in both communities, I eventually found myself here in Los Angeles.
Well, welcome to big-city politics all over again.
It's great to be here.
Of course, pet overpopulation has become a kind of a disturbing problem in most major cities, including here, of course. If you would, give us an overview of the situation and what you're currently doing to try to control the problem.
You're right. This is a problem that has really risen on the radar screen in most communities across the United States. And most large cities in the United States are really trying to move forward as quickly as possible to a status called no-kill, which is where we get to the place where any animal that is healthy and adoptable and well-adjusted, or even treatable animals, aren't being euthanized just because there's not a loving home for them. In the city of Los Angeles, to give you an idea, we're taking in, rescuing from our communities, streets and alleys and rural areas, in the neighborhood of 46,000 lost and homeless dogs and cats every single year. Of that, about 19,000 of them are being euthanized. During six months of the year, from now until September, we take in roughly about 1,000 neonates. Neonates are animals that are sucklings, if you will, animals that are too young to survive on their own. And we're looking for volunteers to help us foster those animals so that they can survive until they're weaned and we can adopt them out. But it really is a crushing load for every municipal shelter in major cities like Los Angeles to deal with every year. To give you, 46,000 animals may sound like such a large number. To kind of put it into perspective, we take in about 125 animals a day. That's about how many animals an average veterinarian may see in a month. We take that number of animals in every single day of the year here in the city of Los Angeles.
Obviously, there can be staggering costs associated with all of this. What are the costs of care? And I guess there's also a cost associated with euthanization.
That's correct. The budget for animal care and control in Los Angeles is in the neighborhood of $21 to $22 million. And that provides for the 46,000 lost and homeless dogs and cats we take in. We also take in, in the neighborhood of about 8,000 to 9,000 wild, exotic, and farm animals every year. So it's a huge, huge undertaking to care for and treat medically all of these animals. And the real sad fact is, of the $21 to $22 million that we spend every year, about half of that, about 12 to 13 million of it, goes to animals that are ultimately euthanized. So what we're really wanting to do is reduce the number of lost and homeless animals and unwanted animals in our communities so that we can eventually buy down the cost of animal control.
Well, let's look at some of the components that would go into that, along with staff, commissioners, council members, and others. As you mentioned, you're trying to have Los Angeles become a no-kill city. What exactly does that mean? And what's the plan to accomplish that, which you are questioned so carefully about during your confirmation hearings?
Well, what is particularly thrilling about being part of the Los Angeles community is that we have a mayor and a city council who are all animal lovers and who are really working with the department and supporting the department in achieving this goal. And we certainly couldn't do it without their support and their leadership. And you're right, the city council just recently had a hearing this last Tuesday in which they were considering supporting Assembly Bill 1634, which is a spay-neuter or statute, rather, at the state level, requiring all dogs and cats four months of age or older to be altered with appropriate exceptions, you know, to the number of dogs and cats that should be adopted. And I'm very excited that the city council unanimously supported that initiative. And not only supported that initiative, but then charged the department to come up with a city ordinance that would mirror that requirement on a city level and see if we couldn't do it before Sacramento passed this legislation.
Well, as we watched that discussion in council chambers, we noticed that one of the council members was concerned the legislation could punish responsible pet owners. I assume that legitimate breeders would be exempt from the new regulations, or would they?
You're absolutely correct. Any breeder who's a legitimate breeder and has a business license and has a breeder's license is going to be exempt from this legislation, along with any animals that a veterinarian says are too sick to endure such a surgery, all service animals, all law enforcement animals. There's a number of exemptions that just make a lot of sense so that we're not crippling law enforcement or anybody else from doing what they have to do to fulfill their mission. But the legislation was actually designed, originally originated with the Department of Animal Services here in Los Angeles. And since that time, nearly 100 animal control organizations across the state have signed on, as has the California Veterinary Medical Association, the State Humane Association, the Humane Society of the United States, and probably 100 other mainstream animal welfare organizations in support of this legislation because it is uniquely designed to help end the slaughter, as one of our council members put it this week, of all of these innocent lost and homeless animals once and for all.
I imagine anybody who's ever even seen the program, The Price is Right, at the end, has seen Bob Barker say, "And remember, to have your pets spayed and neutered," may be blindingly obvious, but how does this help get us toward a no-kill city program?
Well, you're right. Right now, all of our strategies and programs are designed to mop up after the fact. One of the analogies I use with the city council is that all of our efforts up until now have been very much like trying to mop up a basement filled with water without fixing the leaky pipe. And the water just keeps pouring in. The harder we mop up, the more the water pours in. And what Assembly Bill 1634 does is it fixes the pipe. It stops the flow of animals into our shelters so that we can then use our resources, our very limited resources, not only in Los Angeles but across the state, to help animals in other ways. But it's very difficult for us to even keep up with the level of animals just coming in on a daily basis the way it is.
Of course, you have several spay and neutering programs available to the public, including, I gather, some for low-income pet owners. Tell us about those programs. And by the way, is there any danger associated with having an animal spayed or neutered other than the health of perhaps an already sick animal?
No. As a matter of fact, there are many health benefits for animals, dogs and cats, to be spayed, neutered, and benefits are amplified when they're spayed, neutered at an early age, according to the American Veterinary Medical Association. So everybody encourages people to do. If you really love your pet, you're going to spay your pet or neuter your pet at an early age. And the benefits far outweigh any negatives. In fact, whatever the concern may be, a spayed and neutered animal is happier, they tend to stay at home, they're much less likely to be involved in a bite or an attack or anything else. So all the way around, it's a win-win for the pet. They live longer, they live healthier lives, they're less likely to be out roaming, looking for a mate, and getting into dog fights and cat fights. And that lessens the neighborhood disputes with animals involved. So we're really looking forward to Los Angeles becoming a much kinder, gentler city with respect to our pets as a result of this legislation.
Well, to take care of the other end of the pipeline, Councilman Wesson would never forgive us if we didn't talk a little bit about the city's pet adoption program. Tell us how that works and how people can take advantage of it.
You bet. Los Angeles Animal Services is the pet adoption center of choice. In fact, we have six full-service shelters all over the city that provide the very best of animals. We have the largest selection, the most convenient locations, the most convenient hours. And all of that information can be found on our website or by calling 1-884-527-381, or our website, laanimalservices.com.
One last thing that I just have to bring up because it's something that I'm so impressed by here in the city of Los Angeles, are the veterinarians who work for your department. Sometimes it's difficult to get people who will take on this kind of work, but, boy, they are dedicated and they do incredible work.
They truly are. They really are the unsung heroes of this community, and I really do commend our veterinarians. And another little-known fact, we have a whole crew of registered veterinary technicians, 22 of whom are actually veterinarians with licenses in other countries and are studying to get their state boards here. So the animals that are in our shelters are better cared for, I believe, on a medical level than any other municipal shelter in the United States.
Very good. Animal Services General Manager Ed Boakes, thanks for coming in. Great to see you here on Council Week in Review.
My pleasure. Thank you, Jack.
And again, your Los Angeles City Council has voted to support the statewide measure that would prohibit any person from owning or possessing any unaltered cat or dog over the age of four months. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 20, 2007. On behalf of Lee Smith and everyone here on Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
The city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
911, emergency. How old is your daughter?
She's four years old. Her name's Janelle.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get, pass that into the Watch Commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I'd be going nuts if this was my daughter.
Push units at 7855, 7855, 211 security, Olympic and Hardmore, Olympic and Hardmore, Child Market. Suspect 958, class of 5, off to Olympic, property taken, this currency, code 3.
7855, Roger.
All units, 7855, we're in pursuit of a 211 suspect, some of the houses requesting backup. Any area in the capital, push units.
Go, go!
7855, we're still.
To protect and to serve.
All units, code 4, 11, the Catalina suspect.
Standing with our community.
Los Angeles Police Department this morning issued an Amber Alert. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
It shows?
Yeah.
Let's go.
They take pride in what they do.
99, code 6, under.
And when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Positive on the vehicle.
Roger. Last cycle, two-year, positive on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
Across this great city, men and women from every background and occupation are coming together, volunteering to help the citizens of Los Angeles. They are the poll workers. They assist voters on Election Day by distributing ballots, answering questions, and opening and closing the polls. They do it not for the $105 stipend, no, but to help others. Become a part of this elite team, the poll worker, the next American hero.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Wednesday, April 25, 2007. We want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 on LA City View, which is broadcast throughout the city's cable system, and also those of you who are here in City Hall. Welcome to the John Ferraro Council Chambers in Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we invite members of the public to come down and to watch or to participate in the meetings. You can watch us on television as well, or if you're closer to a computer, you can log on to our city's homepage at lacity.org and click on the links and watch live streaming web video of our council meetings. Finally, if you are closer to a telephone, you can always call in and listen to audio proceedings of our meeting. That is at 213-621-CITY. And if you dial through the menu, you can listen not only to the full council meetings but any of our committee meetings as well. We are awaiting a quorum of 10 members, which constitutes 2/3 of our 15-member body, to start business. And I want to thank those members who are here, pursuant to our own council rules, on time. Councilmember Grul, Han, Labange, Wesson, and Zine. That takes us to six members, and we are waiting four more members. Councilmember Reyes is excused today, but otherwise, we're expecting all the other council members to join us. So I'd like to call Councilmember Alarcon to join us, Councilmember Cardenas to join us, Councilmember Weezer to join us, Councilmember Parks to come down, Councilmember Perry is expected, I believe, at 10:20, Councilmember Rosendahl, if you will join us, Councilmember Smith, if you will come down, and Councilmember Weiss. As soon as we have 10 members, we will begin the meeting. In the meantime, there are agendas that are available. Those are always available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for special meetings, either the city clerk's office here downtown, or online at lacity.org, or in the back of the council chambers. We also have local high school students who serve as council ambassadors who can help you navigate any of the ins and outs of the council meetings. And if you have any questions, our city clerk is also to the side as well. We are allowed to... We'll be getting the meeting shortly. We're going to have the opportunity for public comment, and we've talked to all the folks that are here so that people will be able to be afforded public comment. You are able to look on the agenda, and folks that either are wanting to give general public comment can fill out a speaker card that says "public comment." Or if you want to talk about a specific item, you can also fill that out on the speaker card. Thanks again to councilmembers Grul, Han, Labange, Wesson, and Zine. And in the meantime, if we can ask Councilmember Alarcon, Cardenas, Weezer, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith, and Weiss to come, we will start the meeting shortly. Thank you. We will, as we always do, we will allow for overflow. Ladies and gentlemen, if I can have your attention, please. We always, we have a fire code that is here, and we will allow people to be able to come and to hear all the proceedings, as well as to come in pursuant to the fire code, to give public comment. Nobody will be denied that right. We'll make sure that happens. If we could ask people to please respectfully, nobody is going to be denied the right to speak. And I've spoken with an organizer who wants to make sure people have public comment. But if I could ask the organizers to assist us as well so that there isn't damage with any of the property here as well, that would be helpful, okay? Thank you very much. And thank you, Councilmember Weiss, that we're waiting three more members. We want to thank you again for... Excuse me? If I could have folks' attention for one moment? If I could make a suggestion to you? Ma'am? If I could have the sergeants-at-arms? Ma'am? There are thousands more people... If I could ask the sergeants-at-arms to assist us? Ma'am, if I could have your attention for one moment? You will be heard by thousands more people if you wait till you're on television. And right now, you're just... And I will afford you that opportunity. Nobody will deny you that opportunity. And thousands more people will hear you if you wait patiently for a few minutes, okay? Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could have your attention, please? If I could please have your attention, ladies and gentlemen? I want to thank the council members that are here. Councilmembers Alarcon, Grul, Han, Labange, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, and Zine. Ladies and gentlemen, one of your organizers came forward and asked us, ma'am, if you would like to listen to us? We've already negotiated that, ma'am. Ma'am, we've already negotiated that. Will you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Ms. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. Those are approved unanimously. Next order of business, please.
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, and Ms. Grul seconds. Without objection, those two will be unanimously approved. Next order of business?
Ms. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
I believe that would be in order. Ladies and gentlemen, now is the time for public comment. If folks would like to be heard, this would be the appropriate moment to... If folks would like to listen to the presentations that they want to make and public comment, right now would be the time to do that. But I would respectfully ask people for their attention, and if people could wrap up their conversation so that we can hear you. We can't hear you unless the talking stops. This is the opportunity to be heard. So folks will please take their seats. If they'll be respectful about their conversations, and if they'd like to have conversations, please take those out of the chambers. And then we will be able to have the opportunity to hear public comment. As we spoke to one of the organizers, if folks would fill out the public speaker card or line up after the first speakers, I'd like to ask Esther Tejada to come forward, our first speaker. And please give them the courtesy that you will ask from them as well. Esther Tejada is our first speaker. Is Esther Tejada here?
Hi, she's there.
Okay. All right, we'll keep her card. Spartacus Kakao? Is Spartacus Kakao here? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Spartacus Kakao. I'm with Coalition LA, and I'm here with the coalition of all these housing advocacy groups. And we're here trying to bring this message once again to the council members that we're tired, we're sick of tired, of no action being taken, and we're here to say we want action today, we want a moratorium now. Okay? Not in 20 years, not in 10 years. We want it now. Okay? Because this is a crisis, and there's just too much stress being put on the people. The people are being left homeless, they're out on the street. This is the type of conditions that lead to an explosion in this city, and that's what's going to happen if we don't get the attention of council members to take action today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ted Newbauer is our next speaker. Mr. Newbauer? After Ted Newbauer will be Zuma Dogg, and then John Parker. Good morning.
I would say good morning, but it's not a good morning when I see a lady in white hair being escorted out of these chambers. Once again, we're here... Once again, we're here in front of city council begging for basic rights, like housing. This developer that knocked down this 100
Thank you, Alviva. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Macrina Leon. Macrina Leon is our next speaker. Is there a Macrina Leon here? Macrina Leon? There's no Macrina Leon. Veronica Dolman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Veronica Dolman, and I'm a proud member of Los Angeles Community Action Network. LACAN is here today in correlation with groups from all across the city. We collectively from Housing LA, and we shall not be moved. The membership organization that makes up Housing LA all have one thing in common: they're members of suffering. Suffering that is a direct result of the affordable housing crisis that you have created because of your unwillingness to demand from developers, your largest campaign contributors. We are good enough to clean your clothes. We are good enough to cook your food. We are good enough to clean your hotel rooms. We are good enough to take care of your children. We are good enough to clean your streets. However, you made it perfectly clear that we are not good enough to be your neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next-- our next speaker, ma'am? If I can respectfully ask you to wind up? Ma'am? If I can ask you to respectfully wrap up? Our next speaker, ma'am? Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenya Alcoser, and we will-- if you have that written down, we're happy to make copies for every single council member to make sure, but we want to be respectful of each citizen's right for a minute to speak before us and make sure we get to everybody. Kenya Alcoser is our next one. Is Kenya here? It's not Herman Palatios or Polatios? Herman Palatios? Good morning, sir.
Muy buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Les agradecería si prestan un poquito de atención así como lo hemos hecho nosotros con ustedes.
We'd be grateful if you paid some attention--
Hold on one second. We'll save your time. We have a microphone to make sure that you can be heard as well for the translation. Hold on un momento, por favor. Mr. Clerk, if you'll start the clock over again, please. If you put on two minutes for the translation, one minute for each language. Thank you. Por favor. Gracias.
Okay, lamentamos-- lamentablemente-- haber hecho entrada de la manera que lo hemos hecho.
We are sorry for entering the way we did.
But--
He is--
Pero queremos que se den cuenta que ustedes están en la posición que se encuentran porque nosotros los hemos dado el voto, nosotros los hemos puesto donde están.
However, you are in the positions that you are because we have given you our votes and our support for a long time.
Y nosotros también los podemos quitar de donde se encuentran en estos momentos. Nosotros también los podemos quitar de donde se encuentran a través del voto.
We also have the power to take you out of your positions if you do not support what we say.
Así es que espero que nos escuchen a todos los que nos hemos hecho presentes en este día porque de otra manera no van a tener el voto en las futuras elecciones.
Therefore, I expect you to pay attention to everyone who's speaking. Otherwise, you will not have our votes in the future at all.
Siempre los hemos elegidos con el único propósito que nos representen adecuadamente y que estén siempre basándose en las leyes y no olviden a los pobres que somos los que más necesitamos.
We have always supported you because you said you were going to represent us fairly, especially the poor who need your help the most.
Esperemos que limiten o que más o menos equilibren las contribuciones que le hacen las grandes corporaciones para que no nos muevan de Los Ángeles porque queremos viviendas justas para todos de una forma equitativa.
You must have affordable housing for everyone who needs it. Otherwise, we will not be happy.
Algo más: la brecha entre ricos y pobres es demasiado amplia. Esperemos que ustedes, por favor, la hagan un poco más corta.
The gap between the rich and the poor is too wide. We need you to minimize that gap.
Gracias, señor. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jaime Zeledón. Jaime Zeledón. And then we have Patricia Sanchez. Or Plancia Sanchez, excuse me.
Buenos dias, Sergio Garcetti.
Good morning, Sergio Garcetti.
Y concejales--
And council members.
--in representation of the community of Silver Lake and Highland Park--
Highland-- Highland Park, I'm sorry.
Highland-- Huntington Park. In West LA--
In West LA.
Estamos pidiéndole a todos ustedes--
We're asking all of you--
--algo muy simple--
Something so simple.
--que pusieran en práctica ustedes el sobrevivir con $800 dólares al mes que un obrero, un trabajador, recibe cada mes.
To put in practice-- to put in practice in living with $800 a month, just like all of us do.
Y quisiéramos escuchar de ustedes--
I would like to ask from all of you--
subsidios para viviendas dignas, accesibles--
Subsidies for affordable housing.
No subsidios para las grandes corporaciones de real estate--
No subsidy for big companies and real estate.
--que están construyendo condominios--
They're--
--in Hollywood--
They're making condominiums in Hollywood, Silver Lake, Echo Park, Bull Heights, West LA.
Una vivienda digna es-- es un derecho, no un privilegio.
A good home and a--
Es un derecho, no un privilegio.
It's a right, not a privilege.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker-- is it a Plancia or Patricia? I'm sorry. Sanchez?
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Patricia Sanchez.
My name is Patricia Sanchez.
I live in the city of Venice, and it's there where they're illegally impacting tenants. We survive with a salary of $1,100 a month, and the rent is $2,400 a month.
We survive with a--
Por eso estamos aquí para apoyar la vivienda justa.
And they are asking for $1,200.
Mucha tristeza ver que Antonio Villarreal goza--
It's a sad thing to see Antonio Villarreal go--
--that he wants to send kids to colleges. But the education also starts at home.
But education also starts at home, and if we don't have a home--
--a good house--
--where are they gonna be, our kids?
We are gonna-- We are gonna-- --and we are gonna--
We're doing this for our children, and we're doing this for just a house.
Espero que ustedes tengan conciencia en esto que le he dicho.
I hope you have conscious of just what I told you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carl Haje. Carl Haje or Haje? Or Haje? H-A-A-J-E, Carl? Okay. Put that aside for now. Claudia Medina? And after Ms. Medina will be Monisha Lewis. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I'm not gonna apologize for the way people came in because although you might consider it a little disrespectful, it's just people unleashing their pent-up frustration over the lack of housing in this city. Councilman Garcetti, after living in your district for 15 years, my family got priced out of your district, as has many of my family and many of my friends. We can no longer live in Hollywood, Echo Park, Koreatown. Councilman Labanche, I now live in your district, and my family-- we live three people to a small one-bedroom. My mom and I share a bedroom. My sister sleeps in the living room. The worst part is that I'm considered a professional because I actually have a college education and a law degree. But yet, even with that, I still can't afford to move to a bigger place because my family did grow up poor. And so, you know, I think, okay, my family at least has me now. What about families that are growing up as I did, with a mom that is scrubbing the toilets, that is sweeping people's floors? How are they supposed to live? So again, I just ask you to listen to our demands and to understand.
Thank you very much. Monisha Lewis is our next speaker. Monisha Lewis. And after that is Abdullah Muhammad.
Good day, everybody.
Good morning.
I had to come down here because I live on Temple and Alvarado. And like she just said, I went to college. I believe that, you know, if I educated myself, that I would be able to make something of my life. And my parents are immigrants as well. They're from Jamaica and Belize. And it seems like housing-- housing in my own city where I grew up, I'm not able to do. And I have to decide to either further my education or stay at home. And I think you guys need to really actually realize that people want to have that dream. But that American dream is not only for people on the west side. It's for everybody. It's not just for people that have lots of money. Citizens-- citizens are not determined by how much money they have. Everyone deserves a right to have affordable housing. And this issue is not only about gang violence. The reason why people are in gangs and selling drugs is because they have to pay rent. And we need to realize if we want to better our lifestyle as people who live in the city, we need to start with employment and housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Abdullah Muhammad is our next speaker. And then Carla Andres is-- Carla Andrent is after that.
Good morning. I'm not here to apologize for what we did this morning. We have a right to get redress about the prowess of the for housing in Los Angeles. And as people were speaking, they didn't mention that we have also some demands that we would like to present to the city council dealing with this issue. So please bear with me while I read these demands off to you. All right? The city needs to take action right now to protect thousands of families at risk of losing their housing. We demand that the city take action to protect housing. LA's list of 100 buildings that are at risk due to a high likelihood of demolition or conversion, consistent harassment and illegal eviction attempts, or severe slump conditions-- I should say, and severe slump conditions. We demand action on these 100 buildings within the next 100 days. Two, the mayor and each city council member must designate a point person or their staff who will be responsible for-- A, working with tenants, housing LA members, relevant city departments to ensure the problems at the 100 buildings are resolved for 100 days, including by with progress reports. B, working with tenants and housing LA members after initial 100-day period to ensure tenant rights and housing violations are resolved for actively in the future. Working within the C, working with individual residents to ensure that they don't unjustly lose their homes. Three, the city council and the mayor need to move from studies to action and implement our three housing policy priorities within six-month period. A, designate permanent dedicated sources of funding for the City Housing Trust Fund to ensure a minimum of $100 billion to fund each year. B, preserve existing affordable housing by prohibiting condo conversion and passing a permanent residential hotel protection ordinance. And C, enact a citywide make-income housing requirement so that developers are required to include affordable units and all new housing throughout the city of Los Angeles. So those are our demands. And you know we've been working on this problem for years and years in this city. You know the city is behind in building affordable housing in LA. It's number one in affordable housing because you don't pay enough money for affordable housing in this city. And you know we need it because of the condo conversion, demolition, development, gentrification, and everything that's going on in this city. This is why people are pissed off and mad. That's why they came in here like this in the first place because we can't get redressed for this problem.
Appreciate it. I know-- This has been passed--
We have also-- One of our members, they should be arrested for trying to meet with their council person and get redressed. So we have her--
Thank you.
--being arrested, Helen Garrett, from Power, and we would like her to be released immediately.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carla Andres. Is Carla Andres-- Is Carla Andres here? Once, twice? Our next speaker then is Melrose Larry Green. If you give folks the opportunity to be heard, our next speaker is Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning. I want to temper my comments before I talk about what I really came to talk about. As a matter of fact-- not that you need-- I need to defend the city council-- but no city has spent more on affordable housing than the city of Los Angeles. Not Boston, not New York, not Houston. But let's not get confused with the facts. And you can-- you can-- I can talk to you afterwards and give you the stats, but that's about affordable housing. The reason why I came here is I've got a really great idea for the staffs of the city council members. There's so much stress that people that are staff members go through of city council and council members. Yesterday, I was running up on the Hollywood Hills. I had a great idea. There should be relaxation rooms for staff members. The staff members work so hard-- you know what I'm talking about, you staffers. You do 150 things a day. There should be a relaxation room where--
Shh, folks. I'm gonna very respectfully ask--
No, 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 no. No, I've been homeless. Wait, 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 wait.
Mr. Green, if you can hold-- if you can hold this time, Mr. Clerk. Hold on one second. Folks, ladies and gentlemen, if you will listen for a second, we-- your time is being held, Mr. Green. If you will please-- folks can clap as much as they want. We will ask you. We do have Rule 12. Please listen for a moment. We live in a democracy where First Amendment rights are protected for everybody, and we're giving everybody, even if you vociferously disagree, the right to speak. Just as we are protecting your rights, please allow us to protect his rights, even if you disagree-- And Mr. Green, if you will finish your-- finish what you're saying.
How much time do I have left? How much time is left, Mr. President?
I think you have about five seconds left.
Five seconds. Anyway, relaxation rooms for the staff members, chill-out rooms for the staff members, and we can get it through private funding, not through city money. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Weaver. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Weaver. Once, twice. Okay. Deborah Burton. Ms. Weaver?
Good morning.
Welcome.
Once again, I'm gonna state that--
Shh, folks. We'd very much like to hear Ms. Weaver's comments if we could please have your attention, Ms. Weaver.
Okay, once again, I'll reiterate what one of the gentlemen said earlier. The city needs to take action right now on-- to protect the thousands of families at risk for losing their homes. We're demanding that the city take action and protect housing LA's list of 100 buildings that are at risk due to the higher-- high likelihood of demolition and conversion, consistent with harassment and illegal conviction-- eviction attempts and severe slump conditions. I live on the west side, and in that area, we need affordable housing desperately. I specifically live in Marina Del Rey. And when the developers come in and redevelop the properties that are over 30 to 40 years old, they are tearing them down, and some of them, they are renovating. And when they renovate them, they do not give us any compensation. We just-- or we're just kicked out, and then the rents are doubled. And we have nowhere to live. There are people that have lived in these complexes for over 30 to 40 years, and they're just kicked out as if they're just dogs.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Deborah Burton is our next speaker. And after Deborah Burton is Don Garza. Ms. Burton, good morning.
Good morning. We came here-- the members here-- came here to be heard. A lot of our community members have been denied interest to this facility because of fire code. Now, we see on the wall that you can have 380-some people attending, and we only have 360-something. So, and we're not going anywhere until you let our-- our community members in.
Folks can come in, and there's seats right now. So we'll make sure-- there's seats just behind you right now. A lot of people left, so we'll make sure--
They're not letting them in.
We'll make sure folks can cut in. Don't worry. Don't worry. I'm telling you--
No, well, let them in.
According to the fire code, we will let people in.
We don't-- I don't want to argue. I just want to let my community members in. We came to make a demand, make a statement, and until we're all together, we're not leaving. That's what I want to let you know. We are not leaving. We also would like for you to release Helen. Helen Garrett? So where is she? She did nothing wrong. And--
Thank you. And Don Garza is our next speaker. Mr. Garza is also with the Coalition. Don Garza is our next speaker, ma'am. If you afford him the ability to speak as well. Thank you.
I don't need a microphone, and you know that. And you can turn it off, you can turn it on. I don't care. This is the United States of America. This is the people's house. The rules are that the house belongs to the people. There is no way that I can tell anybody how they are gonna enter this house. There are rules, there are regulations. But when people are losing shelter plus care, when we fight for affordable housing, build the housing, get the money for it, and there isn't any money there to help subsidize the housing, what good is it? It is time that this city council-- this one-- not the one in the past everybody keeps talking about-- this one-- goes to that White House where that man is sending people to die on the killing fields-- good people-- while their families have nowhere to live at home. You have that obligation. We know that George Bush hates Los Angeles. We know that the Republicans hate Los Angeles. But it's time you became rebels. You are the Minutemen. You represent the people. And I'm gonna say it loud and clear: Do it! Because if you do not--
Our next speaker-- Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann. Is there an Ann out there? Thank you, Mr. Garza. We appreciate your comments today. Thank you. We-- Our next speaker-- Thank you. Our next speaker-- Good morning, ma'am. If you could just tell us your name, please.
Good morning, everybody. Hey, I can see that some of you guys are not listening to us. I know I can't see, but I know. And I want you to know-- I didn't expect to talk today, but you took my caregiver away from me. And all she was doing-- she couldn't walk too fast, and they pushed her. She said, "Don't push me." And you let them arrest her for that. She's my caregiver. Plus, she had a statement to make about this whole situation. It was gonna be a very short, very meaningful station. I want her back. She's my caregiver.
Helen Garrett is her name. She was taken in the back. She's the caregiver for Carmen right here. We need Helen back. Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a card just filled out as Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Is there an Ann? If not--
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Vali, and I am a citizen and resident of Los Angeles County, born and raised, West LA, South Central, however you want to label it. I'm born and raised from Cedar Sinai, and so is my two children. I was evicted because of management, cricket managers, and things going on. However, whatever. I've been on Skid Row for seven years, departed from my daughters. I worked for Purpeshar Downtown District Big. I cleaned your trash cans, your gutter rats, risking my life for needles-- hemp. I worked for Center District Big, Historic Court, and I'm homeless. I'm homeless, and I still take care of my kids and myself, and I get up every day to clean your downtown LA. Central-- Division, police, harassment. And it's time to stop. I'm tired.
Our next speaker is Andrew Johnson. Is there an Andrew Johnson? Good morning, Mr. Johnson.
Good morning. Good morning. First, I'd like to ask the council and the people present here to release our coworker and our friend and the resident that came in and were arrested. The next thing that I'd like to say is this: that I want this council to take notice that the spirit of LA, of Los Angeles, has been traditionally throughout history of one of Los Angeles pulling together for a common cause. If you go back to the '60s, the '70s, you will see that Los Angeles stands out in the history of America[1514.68] of America as a city that will not stand for injustice. Now, you have housing, you have police harassment going on in the city, and you are witnessing today the spirit of Los Angeles that you're trying to crush through gentrification, through all types of people being arrested, 6,000 arrests in downtown LA. If somebody came to your neighborhood and arrested half of your community, how would you feel? You know? And you can't say half of your community is selling drugs or whatnot. The numbers don't add up. So, big fun?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Daniel Weisman out in Van Nuys. Thank you. Mr. Weisman is our next speaker out in Van Nuys. Our next speaker's in Van Nuys. Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Good morning.
Yeah, it's nice to see you again. The situation that you are viewing now is viewed each day when you have public comment. The underlying situation is we have a number of people in our city who are concerned, and they look to the city council for the solutions. We have a serious problem with public comment in that there's so many people wanting to talk to you, and you have such limited resources to respond to them. I think that some major changes in the way public comment is received needs to be done, and I would suggest that it should be done through the neighborhood councils. I want to suggest to everybody who's just spoken to you to come forth and be part of the neighborhood councils, because that's the source of the voice of the public. We've had some negative publicity lately, and most of it is because the city council, the city council members are not listening. We need you to help. We need you to participate. We have a new world with a new general manager.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. We appreciate your comments this morning. Thank you. Pete White is our last speaker here. Pete White?
How dare you look with indifference at your constituents behind you. This is LA behind you. We understand that our silence is your power, and we will no longer be silent. Today is just the beginning. As you play with your cellphones, as you call the developers to get your little campaign contributions, understand that we will not sleep. Understand that we will not leave today until Helen Garrett is released. Understand, as all of you look down, and as you're afraid to look at the people who put you in the office, the people are amassing. Your BS progressiveness, we don't buy it. We are the real LA, and we are prepared to fight. We are not leaving today until we see Helen. We are not leaving today until we see Helen. We are not leaving today until we see Helen. You say get back...
Our next speaker is Kenya... Our next speaker is Kenya Alcoser. Thank you, Mr. White, for your comments. We appreciate their comments today. I'd like to see if any of these other speakers are here. One final call for Kenya Alcoser. Esther Tejada? Is Esther Tejada here? Is Esther Tejada here? Is Makrina Leon here? If she'd come forward, please, Ms. Leon? Good morning. We have a microphone coming up. Please.
Buenos dias a todos.
Good morning, everyone.
Mi nombre es Makrina Leon, y estoy aquí por el mismo problema de todos. Tengo un testimonio, un testimonio más de las viviendas. En la casa donde yo vivo, estoy siendo desalojada. Solamente me dieron sesenta días. Soy madre soltera.
I have been evacuated from my home. I only have sixty days to look for another house. I am a single mother with three children. What am I gonna do?
Necesitamos más viviendas, más edificios, donde vivir, porque la situación es muy grande, y la razón de que nos están desalojando es que la casa no está código.
Um, we ask that you guys pay attention to our voices, and we ask for a little respect from you guys. As we respect you guys, we ask for you guys, please raise your head and look at us when we ask you to make a change in the city. Half of you guys are looking at us, and the other half of you guys are either looking or talking to other people. And we ask that you guys pay attention to every single voice we have to say. And action as well.
If we could hear Leon. If we could continue with Ms. Leon's testimony, we'd be happy to recognize you separately as well. Folks, if I can ask so we can hear what's being said, it's very important for us to hear. Also, so folks know, on the screens that are in front of us, we also have the television that is watching what you are saying, so please continue. Senora Leon, por favor, continue.
Okay. Como ya mencioné, la casa no tiene código. Es que la están echando abajo, y no tenemos bajos recursos, porque lo que gano es muy poco, y no es justo que yo vaya a pagar ochocientos mil dólares por una recámara.
They're demolishing the house where she is currently living at. She does not afford to pay an 850 or above rent for one month. She makes too little money. We ask that you guys have consideration and stop demolishing the hundred buildings that you guys are demolishing. And...
Thank you.
Solo les pedimos que necesitamos más edificios, como cien o más, por favor. Esto, gracias.
We ask that you guys help those that are low-income and build, either start building more affordable housing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Carla... Is Carla Andres here? Or Carl Hodge? If not, I'd like to then recognize Mr. Weiss, to close our general public comment for the meeting. Some of us, you've noticed, have been wearing jeans for a campaign that Mr. Weiss will be presenting on. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm joined in this presentation by Councilmember Dennis Zine, and I'd like to ask the council president and the council president pro tem if they could join us on behalf of the whole council, and in fact, on behalf of all of city government. So wait for Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Gruel. And we're joined here at the podium by Patty Giggins, who is the remarkable force of nature, who is the genius behind Denim Day, which has been organized in the past by the Los Angeles Commission on Assaults Against Women. But that organization recently changed its name to, they're now known as Peace Over Violence. The reason for the name change is to make it clear that violence issues, while they are often about women, they are not always about women. Sometimes we're talking about attacks on men, sometimes we're talking unfortunately about attacks on children. And so, the mission of Peace Over Violence is to get the word out about how people should respect one another and treat one another, and that's what Denim Day is all about. I'll let Patty and Mr. Zine tell you about it in a moment. I just want to share the following story really with you, Patty, which is, this morning I drove my daughter to school. She's thirteen, she's wearing jeans, because it's Denim Day at her school. And that's when it really struck me what a brilliant concept Denim Day is, because it's about wearing jeans. It's a very accessible way to enter the topic. It's a very accessible and understandable way to begin the conversation, especially with our kids, boys and girls, because all of them need to have a higher degree of awareness than we have typically given them in the past. And just using the simple context of, hey, we're wearing jeans today, as a means to open up that conversation is brilliant. Because it's brilliant, it is working, and Denim Day is becoming, fast becoming, a phenomenon here in Los Angeles County, and I believe it will not be long before it is a phenomenon across the nation. So in a few moments, we're gonna hear from Patty, and Patty's gonna introduce us to Lucy, and Lucy's gonna tell us her story, and we are so proud and humbled, Lucy, that you have joined us here today. We're gonna hear from you in a few moments. First, Councilmember Dennis Zine.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you. And remembering when this first began nine years ago, and it was little known about wearing denim on the particular day. Now, nine years later, you look around this council chamber, and you look around the city employees, and vast majority of them are wearing denim. It's becoming what needs to be the message, not only for Los Angeles, but for people of the United States. It happened in 1999, when there was that decision. That's a Supreme Court decision in Italy. And that's how it started, with some judge who was not really focused on reality, thought that the tight jeans on the women were part reason why she was the victim of the sexual assault. Last year, over 250,000 individuals in LA County signed up to wear denim to raise awareness. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And the importance of the issue, underlined by statistics, indicated that there were 2,384 reported rapes in the county of Los Angeles in 2005. Those are crimes that we know we can prevent. Eighty-two point eight percent of rapes committed by an intimate relationship are not reported to the police. Eighty-two point eight percent are not reported to the authorities. Sixteen percent of women are raped during their lifetime. Sixteen percent, which is an outrageous number. Twenty-nine percent of all forcible rapes occur when the victim are less than eleven years of age. One in thirty-three internet users, and we talk about the internet now, one in thirty-three internet users younger than seventeen receive an aggressive sexual solicitation involving offline contact or request of offline contact. And that, we know, is a growing problem. And the peace over violence is the mission to educate the public about the reality of rape and sexual assault, and I'm proud to stand here with my colleagues to bring awareness to this and to spread this message. And every year I see you, every year we got more badges, we got more pins, and we spread the word to more people. So congratulations, continue up the good work. And Jack, thank you for sharing the podium with me on this very, very important Denim Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Very briefly, the council president and the pro tem are gonna say a few remarks, then we're gonna hear from Patty.
Thank you, and a lot's been said this morning. I want to thank Patty for her leadership on this. And this morning, I was on Channel Five, talking about car seat installation and the importance of children, and the reporter kept looking at me, because here I was in jeans, you know? And I said to her, "You're wondering why I'm so casual today, and why I'm in jeans." And I shared the story with her, and the cameramen that were there, and the police officers that were there. And that really is, as Jack said, is the reason that this is a good way to talk about a difficult subject. A difficult subject that you don't want to talk to your daughters about, because you hope that it will never happen, or your sons about why they need to be aware and respect women, and that rape is never acceptable. There is no excuse, and wearing jeans today is our small part, but as you go nationally and internationally for what you are doing to raise awareness, it is so critically important. And so, we're today here supporting you in your efforts, not only today, however, but every day of the year. And we will continue to stand up and say, "There is no excuse." And we will stand up every year and wear these jeans and tell people who otherwise would not understand what it means and what that court decision said. Because everyone's response, when you say, "We're wearing jeans because of this court decision," and that they assumed the woman was responsible for this and played a part in it, everyone gasps, and it seems so foreign to us. And yet, that happens, rape happens every single day here in the United States, and we all hope to do our part to never have to have that happen again to a woman here in the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Zine, Ms. Gruel for doing this as well. I want to thank the work of the women behind me, who have continued to make sure that in Los Angeles, where one of the toughest parts of being a council member, but this is not just unique to council members, is dealing with those crimes when they happen. To have parents of children who have been sexually assaulted come visit you in your office, to deal with survivors who come looking for some redress, and I know that all of us around these chambers deal with the impact on our communities that sexual assault has. But jeans are our way in. I remember when I was, in the first year that I wore jeans, we had a bunch of calls into my office asking, "Why is my council member wearing jeans? He shouldn't be wearing jeans." And that allowed our receptionist to begin to have a conversation about what Denim Day was about. And for all of us who have spent time counseling survivors, who have spent time in groups trying to raise awareness and to change attitudes and understandings of sexual crimes, we all know that Denim Day is something which we're in solidarity, not just across Los Angeles, but across the world. There are people today who are recognizing that sort of impact, and I want to thank them, thank Mr. Weiss for his leadership each single year on this, as well as all of you who are here today. Thank you very much.
Patty Giggins. All right, Patty.
Oh, thank you so much. I feel like, because this is growing, our campaign, our Rape Prevention Education campaign is growing so much, I have fewer things to say, because all of you are telling the stories and giving the information and supporting. Peace Over Violence, the mission of Peace Over Violence is to build healthy relationships, families, and communities free from sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence. And we do that through our whole emergency services program, where we are there for the victims of violence. We will go to the hospital, we will go to the police station, we will go to the court when there is a court case. We will have support groups, so people can get together and begin to heal together from the violence, from the trauma. We do in-person counseling, we do advocacy, we help people rebuild their lives. Sexual violence affects people across the lifespan, from children, boys, girls, adolescents, teenagers, adult women. As we know, it happens in prison. It's across ethnicity, it happens in every community in our city and our county. The people who answer our 24-hour hotline, our volunteers, because for thirty-five years we have trained volunteers from this very city to be those advocates, those peer advocates, to answer those phones. Sometimes people call us, and they've never told anyone about the violence that happened, the rape, the sexual violence. Those volunteers are from all of your councilmanic districts. It's far and wide the reach that we are trying to have on this topic. The goal of Denim Day in LA is to support the healing, to support survivors, and to prevent sexual violence from happening in the first place. And the way we do that is by trying to change attitudes, to give solid information, to bust the myths that it's about because of what a woman is wearing, what a girl is wearing, how a teenager is dancing, who somebody chooses to date and being accused of, "Well, why did you go out with that guy? He raped you. Why'd you pick him?" We have to stop the victim blaming, and I really want to thank all of you for helping us spread this word. It is spreading. Today in Sacramento, on the steps of the Capitol, senators and assembly members are standing up for Denim Day in California. And with your help, we will make this, eventually, we'll just wear jeans without having to wear buttons about it, but together we can actually begin to pay attention to what it really means to suffer from sexual violence, and that it happens not only to the victim, but the victim's family, to the victim's children. So thank you all for all of your support. It's my great pleasure, since today is about breaking the silence, to speaking out, to introduce you to Lucy, who has her own story to tell. And again, she is one of those brave people who risks everything to go in front of cameras, to go in front of the public, to talk about what happened to her. Thank you very much.
Hello. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I was sexually assaulted on November 17th, 1999. I was jogging when I was grabbed from behind and forced to the ground. I fought as hard as I could, but he was much more capable of exerting physical force than I was. My face was buried to the ground as I was beaten near unconscious. I was then sexually assaulted. But I consider myself very fortunate, because I was able to escape. I forced myself into pretending like I liked what was happening, and when the opportunity came up, I bit him and I ran away. And I bit him where I would influence most. That was eight years ago. Most of my twenties had been spent trying to recuperate. The effects on me were pretty catastrophic. Unable to focus, I dropped out of college. Post-traumatic stress was starting to get the best of me, and I had become very self-destructive. I decided my life and dive into therapy. The state provided monetary help for my ongoing therapy, but it wasn't nearly enough. I moved back home with my parents so I would be able to afford the high cost of mental health, and the stress also started affecting me physically, and the bills just kept piling up. The goal of returning to school was surely becoming unattainable, and it was unattainable. Fear paralyzed me from participating in my own life. Relationships were non-existent, and I developed an eating disorder. And if I had had adequate support and understanding, I'm convinced that the process would have been much less strenuous. Family and friends rarely possess the knowledge to be able to handle what their loved ones are going through. No one wants to face the fact that their daughter, their friend, their sister has had to live through such an atrocity. It's much easier to forget, or better yet, somehow convince the victim into forgetting. I was constantly held guilty for not being strong enough. Albeit I had successfully fought off a rapist, I was still considered not strong enough, because I just couldn't let it go. The shame which has surrounded this crime for many years still exists in our society today, and still exists in our families today. It's not their fault, they don't have the proper education, they don't understand. My own family kept on trying to make me somehow responsible, because then it would be easier to accept. The next time, I might be able to protect myself better. But who's gonna listen? You're listening, but for a family member, for a father, for a mother, for a brother, and for a friend, you don't want to hear what your loved one has gone through, and you definitely don't want to hear the perplexities of the recovery that takes to get back to your normal life. I was robbed of my femininity. I was robbed of my sexuality. And ultimately, I was robbed of my sense of self. Eight years of successful therapy behind me, I'm just now able to start my life and be hopeful for the future. The hope that's there is through education and proper funding. My hope is that we ultimately lift the veil of shame which surrounds this crime. Because if we don't lift it, the victims are the ones that are held responsible for it, and they're the ones that carry it. We thank you for your support in ensuring the safety of our city and the healing of our survivors. The effects of rape are unfathomable, but due to... The effects of rape are unfathomable, but through your conscious help and continuous help, hope is now present. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our, my Mr. Clerk, sorry. Our next item, please.
Madam President, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue Item 13 for three weeks to May 16.
Without any objection, colleagues, that item will be continued. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there's also been a request to send Item 24 back to the Housing Committee.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing 24 back, sorry, referring 24 back to HCED? If not, so ordered. Next items?
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 6 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing, and there is a card on Item Number 1.
Sorry, say that again, Mr. Clerk?
Items 1 through 6 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing, and there is a card on Number 1.
Okay. Let's call one special. For the other ones, we will open and close those. And if we can take up the balance, any specials, colleagues? If not, please open the roll, Madam Clerk. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Zein, did you have?
20 and 21, I need to call him special.
Okay, we're almost, we're not there quite, but I'll make sure we do.
And you take pictures, too.
Okay. Next items, please.
Item 7 is the Los Feliz Business Improvement District item, notice for public hearing.
Okay. I do not see a card, so we'll open and close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, without objection, for Mr. Labange. Next items, please.
Items 8 through 11 are street vacation items, notice for public hearing. Council should close the hearings and instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. Without objection, colleagues, we'll close those hearings and instruct the city attorney to proceed. Next items, please.
Items 12 through 35, with the exception of Item 24, items which public hearings have been held. Item 12 is confirmation of a city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk.
And on Item 35, there are three reports on file, a motion is required. There is an amended motion that has also been circulated on 35 as well as 26.
Mr. Parks and then Mr. Labange.
I'd like to ask the special for Mrs. Han on 35, and my recommendation, we move the budget and finance report when, after her comments.
Okay. We'll call that special for Ms. Han, and we'll know.
Also on 29, special for Ms. Han.
Okay.
And then on 26, we have an amended motion that we ask that we approve 26 with that amended motion.
Okay. Has that been circulated yet?
It has been.
Okay. We'll go ahead and include that. Mr. Labange?
20, 21, special for Mr. Zein. 19, though, I'd like to ask you to take it first out of order. We have a distinguished delegation from the University of Southern California School of Medicine. We have a brief presentation to enlighten the council on issues of pollution.
Okay. We will call that special for you, Mr. Labange. And is there any objection to taking that out of order when we do run through the agenda? If not, we'll take that up.
Thank you.
First, we do have the general manager appointment as well. On the balance, anybody else wishing to call any item special? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on the balance.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 36 through 50 are items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any objection to consideration? Hearing none. Those are before us. We have cards on Item Number 37, 39, 43, and 49. Are there specials? Mr. Parks?
The, you said card on 37, we wanted to continue that to next Tuesday.
Okay.
There's some wording that we have to work on, an amendment. And then also on 46, ask that we call that special, and we can get that heard out of order because the parents of the victim is here in chambers.
Okay. We will, if there's no objection, continue Item 37 until May 1, it's next Tuesday, and call those others special. We'll open and close the public hearings on the others. If you'd like to open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next items?
That would take you back to the items called special.
Okay. Mr. Labange, we have Item Number 19. Mr. Labange requested out of order without objection. We'll take that up, and then we'll come back to Number 12. Thank you. Mr. Zein?
Out of order. I need to go to another event at the Valley at noon.
Yeah, we, we have 20 and 21 requested by Mr. Zein after that.
Briefly, thank you.
Okay. Please, Mr. Labange.
Gunneman is from the USC School of Medicine. Just last year, USC did a study on the impacts of air pollution on children, on children and others, respiratory diseases. Going to give a brief presentation, you'll all get a copy of it. When we make land use decisions, when we make park decisions, when we make housing decisions, I think this will have effect. Doctor, thank you and the university, please.
And thank you, Councilmember Labange, for the invitation to come here, and thanks to the committee. First slide, please. Great. So I'm going to try and run through a real brief presentation talking about the study we've been conducting at Southern California, at the University of Southern California. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Funded by both federal and state and local agencies. Next slide, please. And I want to make the point that traffic emissions have both a regional impact and a local impact. You see on the left the kind of brown haze that we're used to in Southern California, but we also realize that people who live or play or go to school next to a road, such as this bus chugging up the road here, are going to be exposed to what we call primary tailpipe emissions. Next slide, please. 1993, we began a study at USC where we recruited over 3,600 children from 12 Southern California communities, some in the most polluted areas east of Los Angeles and in Long Beach, and then some in the low pollution areas that you see up north there, Lompoc, Santa Maria, et cetera. And the real goal was to look at this issue of regional pollution, whether breathing polluted air was having an effect on children's respiratory health, including asthma and lung development. Next slide, please. Brief description of some of the pollutants. You probably heard these if you look in the Times or TV reports. Sometimes they'll talk about levels of ozone. Ozone is a pollutant that we worry about for health concerns. It's created in the atmosphere, and it's ultimately derived from tailpipe emissions. We also worry about nitrogen dioxide, which is responsible for the brownish haze that you see hanging over the valleys. And then the last one on here is called particulate matter, and particulate matter comes in a variety of sizes, very small particles, and I'll get to that in just a second. Next slide, please. Particulate matter is really a mixed bag. It includes metals, dust, salt, soil, tire rubber, et cetera. Comes right out of the emissions, the tailpipes of automobiles and trucks. It's also formed in the atmosphere. Next slide, please. This gives you an idea about how large of particles we're concerned about. On the left, and in the cross section is, excuse me, the size of a human hair, and the little dots that you see there are what we call PM10 on the left and PM2.5 on the right. They're regulated by the Environmental Protection Agency, and they're particles that we worry about because they can be breathed deeply into the lung and cause health effects. Next slide, please. On the left is the source of pollution. That's the city, the urban environment, cars, trucks, refineries, et cetera. And around here, we all know that the wind kind of blows onshore, and by the time this air mass gets to the inland empire, we have increased levels of a variety of pollutants, ozone, nitrogen dioxide, and particulate matter. Next slide, please. So we studied the lung development of children over an eight-year period, and by the time these children reach age 18, this slide shows that for communities which are on the right-hand side of this graph, they include Upland, Long Beach, San Dimas, Riverside, and Miraloma, our L.A.-based and polluted communities, they have increased chances of having reduced, significantly reduced, lung function by the time they reach age 18, which is clinically important indicator of the respiratory health of children. Next slide, please. Also shown here is, as a function of particulate matter along the bottom, increased chance of having bronchitis and other respiratory symptoms in children that have asthma. Next slide, please. So we began asking recently about, well, what if you live right near a busy road? Next slide, please. And we know from some nice work at UCLA that levels of particulate matter and a variety of other pollutants are significantly elevated if you're within, say, 100 to 500 meters of a busy freeway in Los Angeles or any urban environment. Next slide, please. In the last five to 10 years, there's been an increasing literature showing that traffic exposure is related to increased risk of asthma, increased respiratory symptoms, and so we asked the question whether traffic affected the overall lung development of a child from that span of age 10 up to age 18. Next slide, please. We measured lung function in over 3,600 children. We tracked the development of their lung and looked at a couple measures of overall lung health and small airways health. Next slide, please. And we were particularly interested in the attained lung function of these children by the time they reached age 18. Next slide, please. We found, if you look at the far-right graph here, these are children who live within 500 meters of a freeway in Southern California, and we found that they have somewhere between 3% and 7% lower than expected lung development compared to children who live at least about a mile from a freeway, indicating that proximity to a freeway is having long-term chronic effects on a child's lung development over that eight-year period. We know that if you follow lung function out over decades, that people, adults with low lung function, by the time they reach their 50s, 60s, 70s, are at strongly increased risks for cardiovascular disease, respiratory disease, and mortality. So a child indicated by the lower curve here that has a compromise in their lung development early on is likely to continue to track at a lower level for the rest of their life and be at increased risk for these significant diseases later on in life. So we really worry a lot about children who might be compromised in terms of their lung development. Next slide, please. So I want to stress to you that air pollution, according to our study and a variety of other studies that have emerged lately, has long-term health effects. It's not just watery eyes or tightness in the chest or coughing after a particularly polluted day. We're talking about long-term risks of asthma, long-term risks of reduced lung development in children. Both the regional and local effects have been observed, both by us and other groups. And so what can we do? Well, there's three primary things. We can have less vehicles, we can have less emissions per vehicle, but I think the one, given that we've got an infrastructure in place here with lots of busy roads and lots of cars, is to think a little bit about urban planning and to consider health. Next slide, please. And so I'll part with this slide here that says that children's health really should be considered when we're thinking about citing homes, schools, and parks, and anywhere where children are going to be spending a lot of time. And I thank you very much.
Doctor, thank you. Members, I just wanted to take that time. Mr. Smith, did you want to? Okay, please.
Thank you. I recognize Mr. Smith.
Yeah, thank you very much. And Doctor, I was very impressed by your study, and Mr. Reyes, who is not here today, chairman of our Planning and Land Use Committee, and I introduced a motion to the council to consider, as we place housing along freeway corridors, the impact. Just quickly, if you would, does the elevation of the freeway impact those calculations if it's raised versus the low grade?
Not a lot. And there's so much traffic around here, and traffic creates their own kind of turbulence in the air. So even if it's sunk down lower, that those pollutants are going to mix, and they're going to be caught in that turbulence, and then they're going to start dispersing. Certainly, if it's raised higher, you might have an initial higher peak, but I think if you go out 100 meters, there's not going to be a whole lot of difference between a raised and a reduced low ground.
I ask that because in my district, I have a freeway that goes right through the middle of my district, and we were looking at some housing projects right along the freeway, and I said, "Let's put a stop on that. One goes below grade, one goes above grade," and they're saying, "What's the difference? Does that change the calculation?" But I've asked my neighbor councils and I to look at the impact of what your study says within 500 feet or so of a freeway, on whether we want to allow housing in there. And so I thank you for bringing this forward, and we will be considering it. As I said, Mr. Reyes and I have a motion into the council to consider that in future housing development along those freeway corridors, and maybe we can change the way we do things around here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. I'd like to personally thank you for doing this study. A lot of people don't realize with all the science that we have today available to the world, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're actually investigating and reporting and getting documentation about the environmental effects that happen to human lungs and basically to everyone. But one of the, a couple of questions I wanted to ask you is, is it possible to get a full copy of the full report to my office?
Absolutely. Yeah, I have some in my bag. We can also send you PDF files as well.
Awesome. If, whatever form you could send it over to us, we'd really appreciate it.
You bet.
We've been doing a lot of studies in Sun Valley. We have freeways running through there, we have a lot of manufacturing, we have a lot of old types of grandfathered facilities. Before we have the current standards, they're grandfathered in at many levels of government. So we have a lot of issues in my district that I'd like to begin to address, but with science, in my opinion, it's the best way for us to create the best defense in order to defend a community, not only from existing businesses, but also to let people know that certain businesses should not be in the vicinity of schools and homes and things of that nature. So it would really be helpful to get a copy of the report. Have you been working closely with the AQMD?
We have. And you know that they're very interested in roads, and they've come out with some studies linking cancer risk to proximity to roads as well. So they're very interested in this work, and we're very interested in working with them to think about possible solutions and to think about how we can move ahead and try and understand better the burden of disease that occurs because of proximity to roadways.
We've been able to enlist the Air Quality Management District of Southern California in Sun Valley, so much so that they said they've done more testing over the last 12 months in Sun Valley, at least they have in Sun Valley, than any other part of their district, and their district is wide. But at the same time, we don't want to stop there. Is it possible to partner with USC and AQMD if I'm able to get resources so that you can also do studies there and complement what they've already done?
I think that's definitely a possibility, and we're very interested in understanding more about traffic and the full range of health effects. I should mention that AQMD is starting a whole monitoring project down by the ports of L.A. and Long Beach, trying to look at the local impacts of that zone, and we're trying to add on some health component to that as well and do some studies focused down there. So we're certainly open to the idea of expanding and looking at other areas.
I'd like you to please, in layman's terms, answer this question. What is, a lot of, a lot of times we read in the press, it talks about particulate matter. And when you read that, unless you, I mean, I'm an engineer, I learned about it in school or what have you, but it's a very simple term that affects everybody's lives, but until you really realize what it is, you don't, it's hard to understand how important it is to every human being to understand what particulate matter is. So can you explain in layman's terms what particulate matter means?
Yeah, particulate matter, I mean, very simply, is dust. It's little bits of dust. And so we all wipe particulate matter off our counters every day when we wipe our counters. But the kind that we're most worried about are the ones that you can't see. They're invisible to the naked eye, they're breathed in and out every time you take a breath. And in areas where the particulate matter is high, we know that children and adults alike are breathing more and more of that into their lungs. Now, what we're most worried about, and what's emerged recently, is something called ultrafine particles, which are nanoparticles. You can imagine.
Give me an example of how that would be quoted in a newspaper article, PM10, PM...
Yeah, so typically, they measure it in terms of how many, how much particles there are per cubic meter. And I think that the units are probably not that palatable to a general audience, but to give you an idea, particulate matter in the inland empire here in the Riverside area is higher than it is anywhere in the nation. It's above the EPA regulatory standard. It's about seven times higher in the L.A. area than it is outside the L.A. basin. It's not good at all. And we've been linking it to a variety of health outcomes like asthma and lung development.
So when somebody's reading a newspaper article and they're talking about PM2.5, PM10, or what have you, that's what, basically what that means is stuff that can get into your lungs, it could be harmful. And who's the most, my last question is, who's the most vulnerable of our population?
Certainly those that have a pre-existing health condition like asthma, or on the other end of the age spectrum, emphysema, chronic bronchitis, et cetera. However, one interesting finding here is that we're seeing deficits in lung development in all kinds of kids. It's not just those with asthma.
So children is our most vulnerable general population?
Children, because they're growing so rapidly, and they're breathing heavily because they are outside exercising, we think that they're a particularly susceptible group. So yes, I think children are probably some of the most susceptible.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your report. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, thank you very much.
Yes, so much.
For those great questions, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Smith. Dr. Gunneman, I thank you on behalf of the Parks and Health Committee, and I also thank the University of Southern California's Kex School. Often, USC is down here for one of the championships to be honored. You're down here today to inform... You're down here today to inform us, which is so important on the issues. And we saw, members, how it impacts greatly the eastern portion of this county and even to the next counties. Pollution that may be created here in Los Angeles may go east due to the topography of the winds that blow the face of the mountains. We thank you. Everybody would like a copy. And I know the great councilwoman from the 15th, who was out working on a special way right now on issues of the port related. Would you have a question, Ms. Han?
Hey, Del, but if I could have just a point of, a moment here, just to tell everyone who's in the audience and is very concerned about the incident earlier with Helen Garrett, that she has been released. She is not going to jail. And I want to let everybody know that.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Han, for your help in that. And the sergeant said everybody for working on that. But, Doctor, what's so important here on issues, to have information is knowledge is power, so we make the right decisions. Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, and how we make the right decisions because we are a built environment. I thank you very much, Doctor, for your work. Would you please just introduce your staff and your students real quick?
Yeah. Andrea Rico, who are here, who directs our Community Outreach and Education Program. And I'll have her introduce her staff, if she would.
Come closer.
Carlos Crueax from USC, Lina Groomen from USC, Ariela Moore, who's a master of Public Health from USC.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're very proud.
Before you leave, Ms. Han, I actually wanted to ask one question.
Thank you to the council.
Doctor, if you could.
I do want to say something on this issue, and I really appreciate this. Certainly, the effects of the goods movement effort on the communities of Wilmington and San Pedro and really all along the 710 freeway is an enormous issue. And as we move to improve the infrastructure in and around the ports, as we know that America's port is responsible for, you know, 45% of all the trade that comes into this country, and we know that it is a billion-dollar-a-day economy boost to every single state in the union, we are paying health risks for the cost of goods movement to the rest of the country. And while everyone understands how important it is to move these goods to Kansas and Iowa and Texas, people's health shouldn't have to pay the cost of that. And there is a project, there is a project underway for a near-dock facility, which will maybe take a million trucks off the 710 freeway, but it might put a million trucks into Wilmington near the near-dock facility. And the route to that facility goes right by several schools, elementary schools in Long Beach. And we know now, we might not have known it 20 years ago or 30 years ago, but we know now, it is unmistakable that the diesel particulates that are emitted into our air from these dirty engines and these trucks are damaging. We call it the diesel death zone in and around the Port of Los Angeles. And we know that the cancer risks are not just Wilmington and San Pedro. We know that they go inland 15, 20 miles.
At least.
At least. And we know that cargo-related, you might have said all this while I wasn't here, but we know that cargo-related pollution last year accounted for 2,400 premature deaths. We, accounted for 350,000 lost days of school. Our kids are having asthma attacks and cannot go to school and cannot learn because of the goods movement industry here in this country. So I appreciate the work you're doing. I think the time for studies is over. I think the time for action is now. And we've got to ensure the public's health and safety is the priority in the goods movement chain. And I stand ready to do that at all costs. So thank you for your work.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. And just to add, it's a little harder when you're chair up here to ask some of the questions, but appreciate the presentation. And I think all of our colleagues, Mr. Labange, would love to see a copy of that PowerPoint presentation. Those areas that we represent, I too have three freeways that go through my district and an immense amount of traffic in some of our regular streets. And I think the information would be very helpful as we work through planning and land use decisions and transportation-related issues. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. That item is now before us.
And, Madam President, that just is a note and file.
Just a note and file. There was a public hearing this morning on this item. Mr. Rosendahl, did you, no? Okay. So this item will be noted and filed. Thank you. Next, Mr. Clerk, I know Mr. Parks had asked for item number 46.
Madam President, there was a request by Mr. Zine to take items 20 and 21 out of order.
Yes, Mr. Zine, I know we have a, this is a reward motion in a family that is here. Would we be able to do that real quickly?
Yeah, quickly, because I have been in the valley by noon, so.
Okay.
Okay, sure, sure.
Parks will take one minute. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Let me ask Ms. Cassandra White to come up to the podium. Ms. White was here with us back in 2002, in which her son, Rondell Triplet, was killed on July 2, 2002, at 9:25 a.m. He's 20 years old. He was killed while riding a bicycle in front of a residence at the 500 block West 77th Street. We are asking today to reinstate the $50,000 reward and ask Mrs. White to make some comments.
My name is Cassandra White. And on July 2, 2002, at 9 o'clock a.m., my son, Rondell Triplet, was shot down. My son, Rondell Triplet, was shot down while coming from the store behind his town. My son was shot 10 times, and for what? You know, it is a sad feeling when a mother, father, sister, brother, children are right there, losing loved ones. And it's even harder when your child is murdered. It has been five years since my son's death. And out of the five years, and out of the five years, there has not been one day that I have not thought, called his name, thought about him, cried over him, been angry because I feel life is unfair. My son was not a gang member. He was not a criminal. Why? Why did this have to happen to him? I am not looking for sympathy, I'm looking for justice. If there is anyone out there who know who killed my son, Rondell Triplet, please come forward. May God bless you and your family.
Thank you very much, Ms. White. And I'd ask that the public, anyone that has information, would get it to Detective Rocky Osato at 77 Detectives, 213-485-1383. And thank you, Ms. White, for being here. And certainly, the council endorsing this $50,000 reward hopes that it will bring leads that will solve this case.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and thank you all for being here. Mr., Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Item's been approved. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. 20, 21, please. We can read those together, put those together.
Items 21 and, 20 and 21.
Want to read them in? 20, 21? Okay. 20, 21 or up? We have Gary Geis, Assistant City Attorney, here to discuss 20 and 21. If you can give us updated information, I know this is a note and file report, but give us some information that is on our liability account with the city attorney's office and liability claims payouts and how we're doing in that particular arena.
Thank you very much, Councilman Zine. Gary Geis, Chief Assistant City Attorney for the City Attorney's Office. Since the beginning of the fiscal year, just to give you a brief overview of the cases that have gone to trial in the civil litigation unit, we've had a total of 29 trials. 19 of those 29 have been defense verdicts. Out of those defense verdicts, the last demand, not the first demand, but the last demand before trial, what they needed to settle the case for was a total of $84 million. That was an amount that was not paid out because the cases were taken to trial and defensed. Six more trials, in addition to the 19, were what we call favorable verdicts. Favorable verdicts are verdicts where the demand was much higher than what the verdict actually was returned for. In the dollar amount we have for favorable verdicts, $9.9 million was the last demand, and the verdict totally came in at $1.3 million. There were two plaintiff's verdicts, both of them employment cases, and two hung juries for the 29 cases. So as you can see, defense plus favorable verdicts in the office were 25 cases out of the 29.
When we look at the money that's put aside for liability, money put aside versus money spent, how are we doing in that arena?
Rocky Doca Dio's office, in each year that we have had a litigation budget for claims, we have under, come in under that in each year. We expect to come in under that this year. It's always a struggle, obviously, because we have large cases that are difficult to estimate what a jury will do. But each and every time, we have come under, and we plan on being under budget again this year.
And what is the annual budget for that? For the liability budget?
The annual budget for this fiscal year?
For liability cases?
It is $40 million, I believe, this year.
So we will be, we'll be...
And we have returned some of that to the general fund already.
Right.
And we are going to be under the amount, even including the amount that we returned.
So we will be under $40 million spent in liability cases, cases sued, people who filed suit against the city?
Way under the $40 million, yes.
And that's all categories?
Yes.
And are we all done with the Rampart settlements? Are those all put to rest? Rampart cases?
We have two remaining Rampart cases.
Okay. And that'll occur in next fiscal year or this fiscal year?
I'm sorry?
Next fiscal year or this fiscal year?
Next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year. So the bottom line is for liability cases, while people continue to sue, the city attorney's office has prevailed and won in a number of those cases. And we will do, the end of the fiscal year, end of June, we will have spent less than the $40 million that was budgeted for city liability cases.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Parks?
I just, I have to leave, but I just wanted to make an announcement. We have the 93rd Street School here today. Would you stand up? There's 40 students here and their four chaperones. They came on a tour to see what city council's all about. And I think since they've been here, they've been given a treat on a variety of issues. So thank you very much. Make sure you look at Channel 35 tonight and wave at yourself on television so you can see yourself when you get home. But thank you for being here.
Are there any other questions from any of the colleagues on that? If not, request that we note and file 20 and 21.
We'll note and file 20 and 21. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now go to item number 12.
Item 12 is the appointment of Mr. Abasi as the permanent general manager of the LA Convention Center.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Han as chair of the committee.
Thank you. Mr. Abasi, you've been before so many times, I'm running out of questions. You know what, though? It's great. As I told you earlier, you've had like six or seven opportunities to have a vote of confidence, and you've gotten it every single time in committee. You've had it here when you were interim. We talked to you about your permanent position. I think, you know, we are lucky to have you as the general manager of the Convention Center. I think the mayor chose very wisely. I have talked to you on numerous occasions, so has Councilmember Bill Rosendahl. We are delighted at your vision. We are delighted at your energy and passion. We are delighted at how you understand the connection between our Convention Center and the tourism industry in Los Angeles. We know that tourism is the second-largest industry in Los Angeles. We know that if we can increase tourism, that increases dollars to our general fund members. And we know that it's the general fund dollars that we're able to do the things that our constituents expect us to do. Everything from funding our police officers to our firefighters to fixing streets and trimming trees. As we go through the budget, we should be always aware that the sacred dollars that are in the general fund can be increased as a result of tourism, as a result of booking shows at the Convention Center. We're delighted at your forward-thinking about building a smaller conference center at LAX. We love the fact that you don't see that as a competition for the Convention Center, but in fact, you see that as an addition and as a way to grow up baby conferences who will someday be big conventions. So I, again, I don't have any more questions. I have nothing but real praise, excitement, and hope that your leadership will continue to make our Convention Center the premier choice of conventions anywhere, and that we can move forward and look at exploring the building of a smaller conference center near Los Angeles International Airport. But having said that, I would be delighted if you want to, again, regale us with your energy, with your passion, and with your vision for our Los Angeles Convention Center. I know we have two commissioners here as well, who might also like to sing your praises in front of this esteemed body. But I wholeheartedly support your appointment as the permanent general manager of our Convention Center and look forward to having an era in our Convention Center that we haven't seen yet so far. So again, thanks to the mayor for this great appointment. Mr. Abasi.
I don't see how you can... Thank you. And we do have some other colleagues, if you'd like to make a comment, and then we will go to our council, other council members.
Certainly. Good morning, council members. I just wanted to acknowledge the president of our Authority Commission, Barry Glosser, here with us, and also Christina Noonan, the president of the Department Commission. In addition to various friends, colleagues, my wonderful wife is here. I just wanted to acknowledge all of them and thank them for going through this process with me. And I will be open to questions.
Thank you. Would you like to say something, Barry, as the president of the...
Yes, it's a pleasure serving my second term as president of Los Angeles Convention Authority. And it's a pleasure working with Perea. I was asked by the mayor's office, the sit on the panel that interview the prospective general managers, and I must say, we have a jewel in Mr. Abasi. And it's a pleasure to work with him and work with his vision of the future for the Convention Center in this wonderful city. Thank you. And it's a pleasure, Perea, to serve with you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you. Just a quick congratulations. And short time I've been on council, it's been a real pleasure to work with you. You are very enthusiastic about your work. You're focused, and we appreciate that. Thank you so much. I know we're going to continue to take the Convention Center to new heights. So thank you so much. And congratulations, and thank you to the commissioners as well. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson.
Yes, thank you, Madam President and members. I just rise not to ask a question, but to echo the words of Janice Han. The one thing, well, we get many things in you, but one thing that we do get in this man is he is a can-do type of an individual. And personally, when I had a situation and thought that this big thing that I was doing was going to just go down the tubes, he stepped in and made it happen. And it's my understanding in everyone that I speak with that that's the type of person that you are. So I'm proud of you. It's good to have a friend and see you've become permanent. So I wholeheartedly support you and look forward to working with you in the future. Your vision for the Convention Center, I truly believe, is a vision that will put additional resources in our general fund so that we can provide the types of services to Los Angelinos that they want, need, and expect. Congratulations, my friend.
Appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, just a quick echo. We don't need to overdo it here, but Janice hit the nail on the head. I've been working with you since you've been the interim and the acting and this and that and the other. And again, of course, we appreciate the mayor identifying you, putting you in this position, and we've enjoyed, Janice and I, working with you on the issues that mattered to us, and we look forward to your continued leadership and keep us in the black. Congratulations.
Certainly.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. I've been fortunate to meet Perea Abasi when I barely started on the council, and we've worked on many levels, on many issues. But one thing I'd like to point out, that I do predict that our convention center will just continue to grow and show numbers, with all due respect, beyond the commitment that the city has given the convention center, because I think Perea is well-trained, he's been well-positioned to take over the reins and to pick up where the last director left off. And with all due respect, again, I want to emphasize that I personally don't think that the convention center of Los Angeles has been given all the tools it needs, but I do predict in the next 12 months, we are going to see the kind of growth that hopefully we will listen, we will listen to what the convention center needs, and we will be the convention center that we've invested in, and when it comes to the beautiful convention center that we've built, and also that we deserve to be. And we will see more dollars poured into Los Angeles when we finally give the convention center its due tools in order to do the job. But one thing on a personal note, I'd like to ask. Perea, I've been very impressed with you and your work, but I have a feeling it has to do with what you, what your degree is in. What did you, what is your degree in?
Well, I received my bachelor's degree from UCLA in biomechanical engineering.
Engineering?
Yes.
Now I've figured it out. Now it's all making sense. You have done a tremendous job, and now I've figured out why you are so well-prepared to engineer our convention center to go to new heights. Congratulations, and please, please understand, these are my words, these are not Perea's words. I know enough about the convention center and the way in which they are stretching themselves, and I commend you for that, but I think once we start to realize what a gem and what an economic opportunity we have, I hope that we respond and actually allow it to grow to the heights that it deserves to. So congratulations.
Appreciate that comment.
Thank you. Mr. LeBanche?
Thank you very much. Congratulations to you and your family commissioners. Thank you for your service to take a, build a relationship. It takes water and, to live, it takes water and a relationship, really, that's what it is. Now, to have a convention, it takes more than just that. It takes the issue of what L.A. Inc. does to bring it, what you do to close the deal on it. And the question I just wanted to ask you, because there's so many dynamics happening in central Los Angeles and downtown, Jan Perry and her leadership, the issue of L.A. Live, and how is that going to affect your ability at the convention center in a positive way?
Certainly. Thank you for the positive comments, Councilman. L.A. Live, as I had pointed out before, is what Los Angeles as a whole and the area of South Park had longed for for many decades. It's now here. It has enhanced our competitive base. When we go out to market Los Angeles, we talk about all the components. We talk about Staples Center, Nokia Theater, L.A. Convention Center, and talk about multitude of experiences that one delegate can have when they come to the convention center. They can enjoy an event at the convention center, go to a Lakers game at Staples Center, attend a concert in Nokia Theater, and go to the fine dining options that are going to be available very soon. Convention Center is the, if not the only, but among the very few city entities that lives and breathes and works in a very competitive environment. An event can go to any location worldwide, and the reason they decide to come to Los Angeles is based on the services we have to offer, the staffing expertise that we can offer, and also the multitude of experiences that we can offer. And just to echo what Councilmember Cardenas said, we are looking to a bright future. I have worked with this city for the past 15 years, and I have to say, this is the first time that I see an enthusiastic council, energetic mayor, behind one of the most important industries of the nation. And again, all those dreams will be realized. My commitment to the council here is that every single dream that this council had and the residents of Los Angeles have will be realized in a very short period of time.
There's nothing better individually when we have someone come into our own home and share a meal. In this case here, coming into our own convention center to share an event, to make them feel good about Los Angeles. You're very special, and your team of people are very special, so please thank them and inspire them and motivate them. And also, continue to work. The paper today had the tough questions about people who travel and not traveling the United States because of other problems. We've got to straighten that out to make it easier, because you will choose someplace else if you make it tough to choose. We want to be always to welcome the stranger. I thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to you and your family commissioners. Thank you. You guys, anything you want to add? You're okay?
I'll just state that I share the same enthusiasm all of you do for Mr. Abasi, and I believe that his expertise, his passion, and his dedication are not only invaluable to the convention center, but really to the general city of Los Angeles. We're very fortunate to have him.
Appreciate it. I echo those sentiments, and the city is very fortunate to have him, and it's, again, it's a pleasure serving with him.
Thank you. Mr. Abasi, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations again to your family and your whole community of the convention center. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Want to add my congratulations and challenge you as we move forward. It is an exciting time at the convention center, and I think you're the right person at the right time to lead us and to take advantage of all the opportunities that we have and to go and market with, in coordination with L.A. Inc., to go all over the country to remind people that we are the best tourist destination in the world and to get them to come to our convention center. So congratulations, and Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
You've been approved. Congratulations. And forthwith. And you have your cheering squad with you today. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item one was called special for a card from the public.
Yes, I'd like to invite Zuma Dogg, item number one.
Please hold my time, Bill.
Yeah, we haven't started yet, Mr. Dogg.
Also, for clarification, Mr. City Attorney, once you open up the, if you had public hearing already, but you opened it up for comments, don't you have to reopen it again as well?
No, sir. This is not, item number one.
Great, so we'll talk about that later. Okay, item one, this is about lighting districts. There's a lot, every day, there's tons and tons of lighting improvements for the streetlights, and so that's very important, but here's what I'd like to bring into it. Thank you, Michael Corione. I got this inter-office memo for the Public Works Committee. It's about trees. And here's the situation. We got millions of trees. We're the largest urban forest in America, and you're saying, how does this relate to lights? Well, the LAPD says lighting is important to help prevent crime. However, we're not taking maintenance of the trees, and so it's blocking things like cameras and lighting. And so the LAPD, hello, Zion and Smith, maybe you could do something. They say that, LAPD asserts there's a correlation between streetlight illumination and criminal activity. It's the cover of darkness, and the fact that the trees aren't being maintained or pruned or cut is blocking the lights, and so it's hurting a safety thing. So right now, we have also the Million Trees Initiative that's supposed to help with trees. We're going to have to have maintenance for that as well, and I'm trying to go off into the summary here.
He appears off-topic.
No, no. Dion, we have lightings. You want to make lighting improvements all across the city. I'm saying that we need $10 million to maintain the trees because they haven't been maintained. And LAPD, I'm reading a memo where they say that you can do all the lighting in the world, but if you're not maintaining the trees and they're blocking the lights, you may as well not light them. It's called covered darkness, and LAPD is requesting $10 million, and that's going to be in Bill Rosendahl's Public Works Committee. I got the memo right here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And since I have some more time, why don't we continue talking about this? Because?
Remember, you only have so many minutes during the day, so if you want to?
Oh, well, as a matter of fact, that Brown Act announcement hasn't been made, so I guess if you want to make it, we'll start from the five minutes from now, okay? Please hold my time.
Mr. Dogg, that's your own little rule. It's in council rules, seven and eight.
Please go ahead.
You have to read at the beginning of the meeting, the Brown, oh, you don't? Boy, this is a walking Brown Act violation. There's going to be civil suits up and down. You're arrested.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
And Madam President, the order will go over one week.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 29 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item number 29?
Where's my staff? Oh.
Charter schools.
Thank you. Do we have, who do we have to come here? Do we have CAO? And I also like, Joanne Copeland of the Association of Charter Schools is here. Could she come forward? Oh, good. Why don't you all sit up here?
And Alan from Building and Safety.
Colleagues, this was my attempt to have the city of Los Angeles truly partner with L.A. USD in the efforts of charter schools to form, to find locations. We know that recently in the paper, there was an article about how charter schools, one of their biggest issues is finding space, and we have heard that L.A. USD actually has some space and some shuttered schools and classrooms, but still charter schools had an inability to use that space. Of course, I'm the first to say that a charter school that forms in South Los Angeles certainly should not be asked to, you know, have space in the valley. I think charter schools are about neighborhoods and are about communities, and we know that the charter school movement is here to stay. In fact, it's accelerating, I think. Right now, I believe there's 86-plus charter schools under the jurisdiction of L.A. USD. But one of the things we've found, I've found, because I've been dealing very closely with the charter school in San Pedro, the Port of Los Angeles charter school, which was begun by a group of business people, community people, neighborhood council people, to find a way to connect the Port of Los Angeles with a high school that could possibly have careers at the port. So it's a thing I believe in greatly. What happens is that they come to the city of Los Angeles for permits, possible zone changes, they have to go through Building and Safety, there's fire code restrictions, and people felt frustrated because they didn't have all day, months and months, to go through the bureaucratic process in the city of Los Angeles. They're on a calendar. They want to open in September, and so I felt like that rose to the level that we needed, an office of charter schools in the city of Los Angeles, a one-stop shop where those who are trying to educate our kids through the charter school process, besides being chartered by L.A. USD, they would find real help, real partnership in the city of Los Angeles in helping them understand that if they were going to start a school in a building that was never intended to be a school, there were things that had to be done to keep our kids safe and to go through the proper channels to have that school open in September. So this proposal that's before us today, colleagues, stops short of an actual office of charter schools, but I think with our budget restraints this year, this is a good first step, and I understand we're going to have a point person, Alan Wendell of Building and Safety, who will be the point person, that first stop on the road to making sure that charter schools get through our process in the city and so they can get on to the process of educating our kids. I wanted Joanne to be here, who's with the Association of Charter Schools, because one of my concerns is, of course, I think we're going in the right direction. I want to hear from someone in the charter school movement, if this makes sense, what concerns you think still might be. Is this a good first step? Are we going in the right directions? Maybe you can tell us some of the issues that charter schools are having out there. Many people don't realize, L.A. USD gives them the charter and then pretty much says goodbye, good luck. Sometimes, I'm not sure they even say good luck. I think it's pretty much you're on your own now, and we've all had issues. Apparently, there's, there were 40 applications in '04, '05, and 50 in '05, '06, applications in the city from charter schools who need our help in, you know, okaying them to be a school. So, Joanne, if you'd like to start, and then I'd love to hear from, certainly from Alan, on how we're going to move forward, but if you could give us just kind of an overall, you know, vision of charter schools and the difficulties that plague them, particularly as they go through the city process to open up a school. Thank you for being here.
Sure. Thank you very much for being a model city and addressing a very critical need in the charter school movement, which is facilities. We have over 600 charter schools in the state of California, and over 100 of them now are in Los Angeles under L.A. USD. So it's a growing movement. We're seeing approximately 30 projects a year coming through the L.A. Department of Building and Safety, and that is likely to increase as we increase the number of charter school facilities. Many of them are in what we call temporary facilities because they tend to grow over a three- to four-year period, so they move every year for the first three or four years until they can afford to build a final facility and get to their full enrollment. That tends to be the process in which charter schools develop. So a charter school coming into L.A. USD as a new charter isn't looking at just one time that they're going to come through the city, they're looking at a number of times that they're going to come through the city.
That's what I understand.
We are now, for the first time, I think, starting to see some of them get to the point where they're dreaming about and developing their final facility, and some new construction projects are coming forward to us. Up to now, it has been, as you stated, for the most part, tenant improvement-type projects that will retrofit a commercial space, a retail space, and in some cases, a light industrial space. And working with the city planning department and L.A. Department of Building and Safety has been phenomenal assistance to us because we do have a case management unit now that has started to work with us in terms of training, both training for the charter school operators themselves and what they're required to do and what laws they're required to meet, as well as training of the professionals who they hire to help them, the architects and such. And we've just completed a 12-week course for architects in Los Angeles to help them understand how to be good professionals through the city process, and Alan has partnered with me in offering that course, and it's, I think it's certainly something that other cities are going to look towards to do as well, so thank you.
So you think this is a good, we're in the right direction?
We are. We are, we're not only in the right direction, but we're the leader in the direction, and it's very exciting to be there. We've already started to get requests through our office from other cities to find out what we're doing here and how we're doing it so that they can copy this model, so absolutely phenomenal.
Thank you. Thank you. And Alan, I'd like to hear from you a little bit more about how this is going to work. But colleagues, again, this is, you know, there's a lot of debate about schools and educations and what role the city of Los Angeles can have or should have with our schools, but this is an area that I think everyone can agree on, that, you know, these charter schools need our assistance, our help. They need to be, have an expedited, comprehensive strategy on how they become a full-fledged school on the calendar year that they're under. So, Joanne, I appreciated your endorsement of this idea. Alan, why don't you let us know how this works?
Thank you, Councilmember. As you know, development in the city of Los Angeles today is a tremendously complicated process, and it requires full cooperation among all the city agencies involved, as well as the design professionals that are assisting the charter school operators. Using the existing case management system in the departments where it's been established has been a tremendous help, and we see the current motion before you as a means of expanding those services, as a means of further coordinating our procedures and developing even more speedy and better ways of assisting the charter school developers. As Joanne said, we've recently completed a training program for architects and operators, and we intend to continue with that. So there's an awful lot we can do to help the operators, but we do have to agree with you that the need will continue, and we will do everything we can to further assist that.
How would a group of people who are planning to start a charter school, where do they begin? How do they know that, Alan, you're our point person in the city of Los Angeles?
The L.A. USD does maintain a designated charter division. It's a group of about 25 people, and they're the ones that are responsible for examining charter petitions when they come in the door. On a regular basis, the charter division does provide information sessions to the prospective charter operators where they can learn all phases of the charter requirements, all the L.A. USD requirements regarding funding, educational components, staffing, et cetera. And on a regular basis, we have been attending, Building and Safety, myself, has been attending those meetings, to provide about a half-hour, very brief presentation on the very basic zoning code and building code issues that charter developers will get into. In most cases, so that is the introduction, and that's how the charter operators know that Building and Safety stands ready to assist them. In most cases, after a relatively short period of time, as the process evolves, the charter operator will find a design professional and architect to help them, and so that lets us kind of split off the facilities issues. And so that lets us kind of split off the facilities issues where Building and Safety and the other agencies will deal with the professionals, and let the school operators focus more on the other educational issues, the funding issues, and so forth.
Right. I mean, what you just said there is really, the idea behind all this is that they need to be focusing on educating the kids, not having the frustration, the anxiety of trying to make it through sometimes a bureaucratic nightmare in the city of Los Angeles. So I love that that's your philosophy. I think that's important.
Thank you.
Jacob, anything to add to this in terms of the budget and how we handle this?
No, yeah, Jacob, I'm sort of from the CEO's office. There is no direct fiscal impact from this approach, which, as you identified, given the budgetary constraints, is a good first step, I think. There was, or in the...
You all hear that, colleagues? No budgetary impact by us coordinating this effort for charter schools.
Right. And in addition, before you, if the edem is approved, the Building and Safety would be requested to report back with, there is $100,000 in the unappropriated balance initiated in the Building and Safety Enterprise Fund, so there's no impact on the general fund. They're going to come back and report on how to use that to help, to enhance the ongoing education efforts and other efforts to get this, anything to get this program jump-started. So they should come back with a report, and we'll work with them the next month or so.
Good. Well, you know, I want to thank Building and Safety and all of our departments who really saw the need for this. And again, I think it's a first step in the right direction. It may be all we ever do is having this task force. But I think charter schools are going to grow. I think the applications are going to come, you know, quicker than we can handle them. So this is important. I would like to have regular updates to the council. And, Joanne, we're going to kind of count on you with the Association of Charter Schools to keep us informed. Is this working? As we move forward, are there glitches that we can do better? You know, we want to educate our kids. The kids are our constituents, as well as the school districts. This is a way, I think, we can be most helpful and most productive to the end result of building new schools and educating our kids. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn, Mr. Rosenthal, Alzar, next speaker, and then Mr. Weezer, myself, and then Mr. Alcorn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Last night, I was with the Neighborhood Council of Westchester's Education Committee. All they talked about was Westchester High School and how to make it more effective. Some said maybe make it a charter, some said, no, we parents need to play a more active role. There's an energy growing, at least in my district, where local people want to take over local schools. We have no new schools being built in the 11th District. The buses are going to stop bringing the other kids there, and people in the neighborhood want to take them over. There's Mark Twain Middle School, which is down the street from where I live, there's Wal Grove Elementary, and there's also Beethoven Elementary. There's a tremendous interest in taking that complex and creating smaller, more engaged, possibly charter, possibly not. How does somebody approach you with this? Do we suggest they meet with you? How do we go about keeping that dream and turning it into a reality?
Thank you for the question. The California Charter School Association has a program that we call Charter Launch, which actually takes a new developer who's interested in beginning a charter school through all the steps that they need to, in terms of training, to develop a petition and submit it to the district that they will be submitting it to. So in this case, it would be LAUSD. Part of that is working with me on being prepared for opening a facility. We also encourage our charter schools to request their facilities under Prop 39, which is the law in the state of California that requires a district to provide facilities to charter schools. And the one, the number of the schools you have mentioned have recently been requested by specific charter schools under Prop 39, and hopefully, LAUSD will accommodate them on those campuses. You probably have seen some, what LAUSD calls co-locations, on campuses. I think Twain is one of them, and Wal Grove may be one of them, where a charter school will share a campus with a district school when the district has open classrooms that aren't filled. So that's something that we continually work on. We certainly encourage members of the community to come forward and help develop charter schools to support the needs of that basic community and relieve some of the overcrowding in some of the communities that exist in Los Angeles.
You said, hopefully with the LAUSD. Will they cooperate with us? I mean, it's important. And Steve Barr with the Green Dot Group, how do they fit within your plans?
Well, Steve Barr is one of our largest charter developers, has successfully operated a number of charter schools, and has just recently got approval, I think, for eight additional charter school petitions. And so we have great hopes for his ability to find facilities and work with LAUSD, both to share properties that might be available to him, as well as looking to the city for, you know, additional ways in which we can open schools around those areas, particularly Jefferson and Locke High School.
I appreciate that. You know, part of my area, we represent the people, and they could be the kids or they could be the adults, as Ms. Hahn said.
Right.
We're all in this together. What role can I play right now with both the Mark Twain School and the Westchester High School, the council office?
I would love to set up a meeting for you with those that are interested in those areas and further that discussion and see what specific ways in which we can engage in not only developing some new charters in that area, but perhaps encouraging some of the charter schools that are already in operation to support that area. So I think we could address that very specifically in a targeted meeting on that area. And we welcome the opportunity.
So then, you see your role as a facilitator of getting the groups together and either going charter or doing some hybrid with the LAUSD, something that will make it a more effective school?
Yes. The Charter School Association supports public education in the state of California and works hard to that end, too, for the best interest of all of our students.
Yeah, I'm 100% in support of this, obviously. The mayor did not get the courts to go in the direction of us taking over the schools. I'm disappointed because his energy is very positive.
Right.
He's talking about the dropout rate, we're talking about kids, talking about the future. Would you just give me a quick hit of why a charter school seems to be effective?
Charter schools tend to be smaller schools than most of the district public schools tend to be. They often encourage more parent participation in their programs. Their class size tends to be lower. And the educators typically that start the charter school are really able to look at the community in which they're educating their students and develop the educational program that best supports them. So we're seeing tremendous academic growth as a result of those factors in most of our charter schools.
And is there certain control over the money and the budget and the other issues outside of it? And can they raise more money on top of that?
Charter schools are funded the same way our public district schools are funded, through ADA per student. And they are challenged, you know, actually, in terms of that operating budget, because out of that operating budget, they also have to provide rent or lease payments for a facility. And that can take anywhere from 10% to 25% of their budget, depending upon what they're able to find for a facility. So that becomes a little challenging from the financial perspective. But, I'm sorry, what was the second part?
It was basically the monies.
Yeah.
They would both get what they get from the LAUSD budget, but then they try to complement that with other monies, but more in sense they have control over how the money is spent even more closer to the community.
Yeah. Charter schools raise grants and funds to support their schools. There are many foundations locally that are tremendous supports for charter schools. They are also able to, after they've been in operation for a couple of years, submit applications to the state of California for facility funding. So while we haven't been successful in getting large amounts of money in those state bond issues for charter school facilities, we have Prop 1D now, which makes $500 million available for charter school facilities. So we're working diligently on trying to get some of our schools in Los Angeles to apply for those funds.
And I might say that new superintendent Brewer is doing a very good outreach right now. He's going to do a meet-and-greet in my district where all kinds of people are going to get together. He seems to be very focused, and I guess he can complement these charter schools with his leadership.
I believe so. It's our great hope, and it's certainly my belief at the moment that he sees charter schools as part of the solution to the problems in LAUSD, and that he'll work with us to, you know, to rectify some of the problems in the overcrowded schools.
Great. Well, thank you so much for stepping up and doing all this, too. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much. Quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, we need to support our charter schools. They're doing a wonderful job overall. There are some that need some attention, accountability, and I think the school district, the grantor must do a better job of keeping those schools accountable. But the way the city can help is doing what Councilwoman Janice Hahn did, which is to put out the idea on how we could take out those obstacles to allow them to find a place to educate these students. We've read in the paper many of times how charter school was granted, they're ready to start the year, had no place to go, moved from place to place. And we know how destructive that can be to a child's education when it's disrupted by even having a place that they could call home, where they could learn. I think, I would have liked to see the whole outfit, its own office, but I think this is a good, I wouldn't call it a compromise. I think it's a more reality check as to where we are, what we can do at this time. And I think it's going to do a lot, so that we help these educators, most of them who do come to apply for charters are educators, they're not real estate people, they're not developers, they don't know how to, even, I mean, even developers and real estate people have a hard time getting through the city. You could imagine what people who are trying to educate children would have to go through to get their permits to open up their school sites. So I think this is going to help a lot, but I do like the fact that Ms. Hahn pointed out, we need report backs on this, because there's going to be areas for improvement, there's going to be ways we could fix this and help it. I do want to say very clearly and directly to the Department of Building and Safety, we need to make sure we do everything possible to make this as easy as possible. We've heard this council over and over say, and in fact, this council, the city, want to take over this district and take over educational responsibilities, we've heard it say how important education is. This is one very simple way to start that. And again, I think any way we could do as well to support our charter schools, which we must continue to allow them to provide that flexibility, that innovation that's necessary at LAUSD. I was there for four and a half years, and it's very slow to move on the new ways of teaching kids, on the new innovative ways that teachers and students can interact. We're bound by all these regulations, federal, state, and local, that we, protecting the status quo there, we allow us to continue on this one path, and charter schools allows that flexibility, et cetera. I just have to point to one area in my school in Bow Heights, where Rosewood High School, you have 60% dropout rate. Down the street, same students, through a lottery, it's not creaming. We have the Green Dot, Oscar De La Hoya Animo Charter School, over 90% of its students are going on to a four-year university. We're providing children opportunities that they otherwise would not have by supporting charter schools today. So thank you, Ms. Hahn, and thank all of you. We look forward to the report backs. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. And congratulations, Ms. Hahn, on this motion. My question relates very similar to this, and we support charter schools 100%, and we know that sometimes when they're getting into the business, they may know how to operate a child, I mean, I'm going to ask childcare, that's why I was saying that, but a charter school, but getting through the maze of the bureaucracy here in the city is sometimes very difficult, and they're skills-based, and we don't necessarily want them to have to spend lots of money for an expediter to get through that. One of the things that we passed a while ago was the childcare policy for the city of Los Angeles, in the similar vein, saying childcare providers also are unique in their ability or their lack of knowledge probably about how to get through the process. Is this part of the same unit within the, I see David Laura shaking his head like that in the behind you, that the same piece of that where people can come in and if they are a charter school, a childcare center, or LAUSD, that there is a unit within the Planning and Building Safety that says, we're going to help you through that process?
Councilmember, the answer is yes.
Hold my time.
In addition to charter school responsibilities, I also help childcare developers with the same issues, finding the facilities, obtaining the permits necessary, coordinating with other departments. So in our Building and Safety Case Management Unit, those functions, educational, both for childcare and for charter schools, are both in our unit.
Both in your unit, okay. And have you seen, I know we passed a childcare policy a year or two ago, have you seen that it's been effective, I mean, the kind of feedback that you've received, have you seen a lot of people take advantage of that? Are your people who are at the counter kind of aware of where to send them so that there's that extra assistance?
I'm going to say yes, because we have noticed an increase in the number of requests for assistance from the childcare centers. It's a little different population, some of the zoning requirements are a little bit different, but I believe that both the charter school operators and the childcare operators are becoming more and more aware of the ability of the Department of Building and Safety and the other case managers to help them out. I would say because LAUSD Charter Division does, is the central authority for charter issuance, and they give out our information where they can talk to Building and Safety, that's probably somewhat more centralized information. I think the childcare operators are more decentralized. I know that in my work with some of the childcare coordination committees, there seem to be an awful lot of people with responsibilities. So I think, from that standpoint, we might take a look at childcare to see whether there's maybe other ways that we could make sure that all the childcare operators are aware that Building and Safety and other agency assistance is available to them. And I would also point out that the case management assistance is without charge. So basically, an operator can come in, and they do have to pay, of course, the architects and so forth, but we give them a lot of assistance initially with an eye towards keeping them from spending a lot of money on a building that simply won't work. That is one of our main focuses.
That's very helpful, and I think, as been noted by both Ms. Hahn and Mr. Weezer, and I believe Mr. Rosenthal as well, the importance of charter schools and how effective they can be, and particularly in each of our communities, and that we should support and encourage that. I look forward to working with you on the issue of the childcare aspect as well, so we can get the information out to more people, because you're right, it is more decentralized. They don't have the same kind of organization like you do that really focuses all the efforts and the information sharing. But I think it's a great way to say, in Los Angeles, that our children really do come first, and that we want to do everything we can to get that education for them. And sometimes that means helping those facilities be built and permitted as quickly as possible. And just thank the department, they've been very helpful in a couple of charter schools in my district where they've had to get established. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next, we have Garcetti, then Alcorn after Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. And I'll just keep my comments short. I really appreciate, which I know when we say we're going to keep our comments short usually means double the time, but I promise it'll be short. I want to thank you for the work that has been done. Camino Nuevo Charter School, Larchmont Community Charter School in my districts have had very positive experience. I know, you know, sometimes we have to explain why a public hearing is important and why that helps protect them from appeals and things like that, but I've had a very good experience, and I think this builds on it. I would add just one last suggestion. Some of what we do, colleagues, around here also assists schools not just with the planning and land use aspects of things, but the opportunities they have for LA's best, for after-school programs. These are public schools, and great public schools, and where we might be able to help, you know, if they're having one-stop shopping on the planning and land use stuff, a place where we can also have information for them about where the city might assist them with the other programs, whether it's, you know, Safe Roots to School, whether it's after-school programs, that would be a great place just to put some of that information. So if we could help incorporate some of that, let us know, and we'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your brevity, Council President. Now we have Alcorn.
Just a couple of questions, first of all. The, was there, and I think Ms. Gruel might have asked that question, but I had to step back, so please excuse me. Is there a specialized permit process for the other public schools? One-stop?
The district public schools?
Yes.
They get their permits through the state of California. They go through the Division of the State Architects, so they don't bring their projects to the city.
So they don't have to work with the city of Los Angeles? And the charter schools do not go through that process?
The charter schools can choose to go through the state architect's office or the city of Los Angeles, whichever they, however they want to permit their project.
Okay. So this would just provide a one-stop permitting process for charter schools? How many permits are typical for a school?
You mean per year or per school?
Per school.
Three or four, probably.
Three or four during the course?
During the life of their school. They tend to open up, let's, as an example, a middle school charter will have a charter school for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They may have a... They may have a charter approved for 300 students, but they'll open the first year with 100 students, just sixth grade. Then they'll move the second year to 200 students, sixth and seventh.
I'm not sure you're understanding my question.
And so that each year, they'll have to bring a new, they'll have to develop a new facility, and so they'll have to permit a new project.
But how many, do we have planning to answer this question?
Well, typically, there's a general building permit, either for building the new building or converting an existing building to charter school use. And then there's associated mechanical permits.
I just need to know how many permits?
Approximately four to five for each school.
For each new development? And how many charter schools do we anticipate per year?
We're probably looking at this point at somewhere between 20 and 30.
Okay, so 20 and 30 times four or five permits, and does the workload justify establishing the one-stop permit?
Well, sir, I would say that that depends a lot on the agency involvement. For instance, Building and Safety is always involved quite heavily in the permitting process. The Department of Transportation might or might not be involved. Public Works might or might not be involved.
I trust you, just a yes or no, does the anticipated workload for charter schools justify the establishment of a dedicated one-stop permit shop for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so that, is it going to involve full-time employees? Are these employees still available to work on other permits?
We anticipate that in most of the agencies, charter school will be effectively a part-time position.
Okay, so I just thought the public would like to understand that we're not taking away from all the other stuff that's going on.
That's correct.
I do want to make a comment that some of the questions, anytime charter school discussions come up, people sort of pit charter schools against the general notion of public schools, and particularly LAUSD, and that is not the intent here. The question is whether, once a school, whether it's a regular public school, or a charter school, or any other kind of school for that matter, gets approved and meets the standards to be developed, then the city ought to be doing everything possible to develop it. We don't establish those standards, but this is not about saying that charter schools are better than non-charter schools. And so it concerns me when we have those discussions. I'm a supporter of charter schools, but not all of them have been successful, and so I'm not supportive of those. But one of the first in California was established in my district at Von 20th Century Learning Center. So I am a supporter. I do want to ask this question, and you may not have the answer, but it's something that as Chair of the Education Committee, I will pursue. Is there anything in state law or in our general, our charter for the city of Los Angeles that prohibits the city of Los Angeles from establishing its own charter schools? Are you aware of anything?
No.
Okay. I just want to mention that may be something that the Education Committee would want to explore, particularly given that the court decision recently does not allow us to move forward with the other reform strategy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is our last speaker on this item. Nobody else wishes to be heard? Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hahn, just pressed a button. Ms. Hahn, for a third time.
No, you know, again, I appreciate this discussion, but I think for the public, the public will relate to this, and you know, in terms of having to remodel, you know, a house. And it's about permits, it's about having inspectors show up at the right time, and ultimately, I'm sure every resident would want a one-stop shop at the city, and that's what we actually ought to move towards, that we make it easier for people to do the right thing, to get permits. But we're taking a special interest in the charter schools, because again, they're on a school calendar, they are really about educating our kids, that is a priority for Los Angeles, it's a priority for the state. And if this is a way which we can have a point person in the city, we can have information, brochures will be printed so that charter school developers can understand where to come, then ultimately, colleagues, this will be, this will be a better thing for the kids that just want to learn. And if we can be a partner with the school district in this area, I think this is smart, I think it's innovative, I think we are a leader in this area, and I hope other cities will look to us for that example. So thank you for support on this, colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Madam Click, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 35 was called special by Councilmember Hahn, and amending motions 35A and B have been circulated.
Okay.
We all share this. I'd like to have department staff, our president of the Board of Public Works is here, Assistant Director of Sanitation is here, and his team of people who work very hard. Number one, number one, top five, let me do a top-five complaint, I'm sure we all get this, about bulky items. Anybody disagree with the top five throughout the city, wherever it is? Well, top five is bulky items. We want to make it a solution here for resolving the issue. For five years, since I first got here, this is something that I've worked on. I want to thank Eric Sanhuro, my former deputy, who now works for Ms. Hahn, who helped shepherd this along, and all staff members. Let's go with the President of the Board of Public Works for a brief report. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, and I'd like to thank Councilmember LeBanche for his leadership on this issue. And as he just indicated, bulky items throughout the city of Los Angeles is a chronic problem. And there was a task force that was developed to work on this that we met for many years. And we actually had a pilot project that ran in Council District Four and 13 through the period of October 31st to December 31st of '05. And during that 59-day period, we were able to pick up 218 tons of bulky items. So what we have before you, and I'm going to turn it over to Enrique Zaldivar, the Executive Officer of the Bureau of Sanitation, to go over the details about what's before you this morning, this afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioner. Enrique Zaldivar, Assistant Director for the Bureau of Sanitation. What we have presented to you is what we believe is an excellent proposal that will abate, we believe, the problem of dumping bulky items throughout the city, blinding our otherwise beautiful city. In effect, we are proposing a fee of $1.28, $1.28 to be imposed on landlords and tenants evenly split, with some amended motions that are circulating around as we speak, that will speak to other exemptions as well. I want to take this opportunity also to, as Commissioner Ree said, to thank Councilmember LeBanche, Councilmember Wendy Gruel, who is always championing bulky items, and Councilmember Hahn. And I know bulky items are something important to all of you. So we absolutely recommend that you approve our proposal, and we are proposing to make this program effective October 1st of 2007. With your approval today, we will be able to begin a Prop 218 process with all of the subsequent hearings, but we have October 1st as a target date to begin the service and to begin the fee.
And just a question, on the $1.26, what happens when gas prices rise next year? Should we, did we, in the negotiations, there was great negotiations between the apartment house owners and the very important tenant association of the city, and department staff, CAO, et cetera. What happens if there's a need to increase our cost?
Well, the way we would address that, Councilmember, is that we would have to come to you for an increase substantiating why the increase is necessary. We do not have escalators built into the proposal. Now, we can entertain those.
But would it be fair to the negotiations that all took place, because we took five years to get here? Would it be important, now as CAO, would it be important to have an escalator to say that it'd be reviewed every fiscal year, that there may be an adjustment? Because I think one of the things we learned a lesson on recently, and I know, and I'm very proud of them, but sometimes administrations, wherever it is, whoever the mayors are, they say they don't want to raise any fees, but yet sometimes we have to raise a fee because the costs go up. Would it make sense to us to have it, that each year be reviewed by the CAO and recommended that if it needs to be adjusted? Because this is something that will change Los Angeles, because you and the team of people at the Bureau of Sanitation will be able to go out and do the job that is not being done now because we're overwhelmed by it.
Sir Ibago at the CAO's office, any escalation would have to be based on actual costs, so that would be something we would have to look at.
Can you look at it today through this ordinance, and did we approve today? Because we would want to move forward.
We would be okay the way that it is, Councilmember.
Today?
Today, yes.
Right, but we could come back and look at, see the CAOs.
Each year, we could review it as part of the budget process.
Super soon. A friendly amendment, if I get a second, that we review it every year before the budget, so we know what it is. Members, I don't need to say anymore, we all know the images. I know Mr. Cardas, I've seen your picture more in the Daily News, picking up everything. That's why you have such a good muscular frame there of all that extra work. And I know all of us, whether, and I could mention you all by name, and I will, because I've got a microphone. No, I won't. Mr. President, I ask for an aye vote. This is very important to beautify Los Angeles and make people respect their own area which they live. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've seen images of you, I think, with bulky items in Hollywood, throwing them right on the truck, so we thank you for that, Mr. LeBanche.
Thank you.
Man who puts his money where his mouth is. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel, and then Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Cardas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And it is not unlike the rest of my colleagues and Mr. LeBanche for taking this on in the beginning. I really want to compliment you, Mr. LeBanche, for your efforts, because it is one of the top six. Could even be the top one, as you look at some of the quality of life issues in our neighborhoods, along with graffiti and so forth. And as many of you know, we have a much better coordination, and thanks to the Board of Public Works, in how we respond to calls that come in for bulky items. And in this instance, could you just explain how that, how this will work as far as the, if you live in an apartment complex, or you're driving by, or you're a council member that sees it, what happens when you call 311, depending upon the basis of which the bulky items have been out on the sidewalk, or on the street, or so forth? And hold my time.
What you're going to see, Councilmember Gruel, is a similar response as we do now, which is when the call comes in, we guarantee, or we do a response time of whenever the next collection day is. It could be as early as tomorrow, or as late as six days after. Those would be on the call-ins. And there are many requests that come in that are characterized as, you must act now, and we will collect those either the same day or the next day. In addition, we're proposing to do sweeps, a spot of this package, sweeps in areas, that we envision doing those for a year plus, perhaps, until we are able to educate the new customers on the right way to do it, which is to call us.
So it's going to be very similar to the model that we have for graffiti removal, where we have people designated to certain areas, but then we also have sweeps throughout the city to make sure that we are getting the items that are not called in. So it's going to be proactive, but also based on geographics as well.
And I think that we all know where the areas are where people dump things, or we know on certain days of the month, when people are moving out and going to other locations, that we have a higher propensity of that occurring. And I know we have representatives from AGLA here that we have worked with to make sure we notify all of the managers and owners that they can call 311 to get that picked up. Because as discussed, this is really about broken window concept, and the fact that if maybe there's a couch there today, it becomes a mattress, and then it becomes graffiti, and then it is trash, and then it's people hanging out that shouldn't be there, they're sitting on the couch. So it's really important to be as responsive as we can and as quickly. And so I think that the deal that's before us is really a balance of all of those needs, and the sharing, and addressing an issue that all of us, that's near and dear to our hearts, and really reflects on what our city is going to be, how we manage our streets, and how we look at this on the corner. So I look forward to, I look forward to the review. I think that's a great idea by Mr. LeBanche. You mentioned, I'm just, since you mentioned graffiti, I know we've made a change in that now you call 311, and you don't call the providers directly. And there's some concern by my constituents as to whether or not that will ensure the speedy kind of response, because they were used to picking up the phone and calling the people they knew, and being able to have it done immediately. So I hope you will also be very flexible and responsive to see where there are glitches, to demonstrate that we are going to, you know, move forward on that. So I just want to say thank you. You all understand the importance of this, and the department is one of those that most affects our quality of life in our neighborhoods, and we call you more often than not.
And Councilmember, we're really convinced that even after one-year period, the stakeholders in the city of Los Angeles are going to see a notable difference after this program's implemented.
Great. And again, a special thank you to Mr. LeBanche, who brought all the parties together, because there was not universal agreement initially, and really worked out a compromise I think that's going to benefit the city and our constituents. So congratulations, Mr. LeBanche. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is our next speaker, then Mr. Cardas, Mr. Rizar, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask a question, and Mr. LeBanche, you may be the best person to answer this. I see in the amended motion, there's a specific reference to two complexes. And based on the criteria, I could see that the criteria could be applied to any number of conversions and new construction downtown in the Ninth District, although they don't rise to the level of density that of Park La Brea or Oakwood to Toluca Hills, but they may be 200 units, 300 units, even 400 units. Another one that's coming online, for example, market lofts, great number of units. And so I was wondering if there was anything special about the tipping point, which I guess would be 1,000 units or more, or if criteria alone could exempt a project?
If Mr. Zaldivar could answer that question, and there also is a review opportunity for that.
Councilmember Perry, the loft-type high-rise buildings would be in a Phase Two of the proposal. They're not included in this Phase One. Those would be in a subsequent Phase Two, that is not before you today. In other words, we haven't addressed the loft, high-rise buildings.
Okay.
We will in a Phase Two.
How far behind is?
Mr. Hernandez, the issue specifically on Park La Brea, totally enclosed, as well as Oakwood and Toluca, totally enclosed, and over 1,000 units, with Park La Brea being the largest in the city of 45.
Let me give you an example of what I'm talking about. There are loft conversions on Alameda, they're not high-rise buildings, they're buildings, former warehouses that developers have gone in and converted to lofts. I can think of several projects by the Core Group on the border between my district and the 14th District, or the Biscuit Company toy lofts, where they've kind of created or begun the early stages of creating their own campus, or almost buildings facing each other, vacating streets and alleys to create an orientation that is more of a self-contained neighborhood. Self-sufficient neighborhood. So those aren't, that's not a loft, high-rise, or new construction. Those are just basically adaptive reused buildings, adaptively reused structures with infrastructure improvements around them to create communities.
Okay. Then the underlying criteria then is if there are private streets that have restricted access to the public. Private streets within the complex with restricted access, and no direct connection to the public streets. That would be the underlying criteria.
So that would include vacated alleys and things like that, or paper streets?
Well, if we could look at, just to look at example, I wish we had it there, if there was something on the street, there would be street services, wherever it is, to pick it up. But these two complexes are compounds, if you will.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And don't have that opportunity where people are going to dump on their property.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of one project that's coming online over in the 14th, and Mr. Rizar probably remembers the name of it, because I don't, but it's a series of converted and adaptively reused buildings, where they're creating a very eclectic neighborhood that's walkable, pedestrian-oriented, with some street vacations around it, and it doesn't rise to the level of 1,000 units, but it would probably pass most of the criteria set forth in the motion.
And as Mr. Zaldivar indicated, that's what we're looking at in Phase Two. What we're trying to do in Phase One is really look at the renters first, because with the lofts, most of those are owners, and they don't necessarily have the high turnover as you do with the renters.
Yeah.
But that is obviously something that we do want to address in Phase Two.
Okay, well, it sort of highlights that when we get to Phase Two, you'll have to work very closely. very closely with us because of the unique characteristics of the emerging, it's like an emerging market. These are neighborhoods that weren't neighborhoods before.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardas.
Was there a motion?
Mr. Clerk?
I did not catch any motion on that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, in regards to the potential exemptions for units or what have you to participate in the fee, is it a active where somebody has to activate and petition that exemption? Or could it be that they're expected that some of them will be exempted on the surface?
From this point forward, Councilmember, we would expect an application that someone come to us.
So somebody has to petition to be exempted. It's not automatic.
Correct.
From a liability vantage point, I think it should be proactive. They need to petition for an exemption rather than say, I should have been exempt from the beginning and you should have done it for me.
That's correct.
Good. Secondly, uh, a dollar twenty-six, I just want to let Tom know that, um, I wish it were more, but with all due respect, Tom, I want to congratulate you because that's a buck twenty-six more than I got done. So I just want to say out of respect to you and your efforts, I appreciate the fact that this is the amount that has, has come about from a long negotiation. It's, this has been, uh, never been dormant and has been being worked on by different people. So I want to congratulate you because bulky items is a big, big problem in my district. And as was mentioned by Ms. Gruel, I, even though I'm an engineer and I took a magnetism class, I must have missed the chapter on the magnetism of bulky items because it is ridiculous. You start off with a couch and if we don't pick it up within a week or so, then it's a refrigerator and a couple of chairs and then a desk. It looks like an entire apartment complex or, or, or business facility. You could make, out of the furniture, you could make a whole apartment unit out of it. But my point is, this is a big, big problem and unfortunately, or fortunately, in some parts of the city, you can drive to and from work or take your kids to school and not see one bulky item. God bless you. Congratulations. But in my district, you can't practically go one place or another without seeing bulky items. Uh, so this is a long time coming, uh, and, and I'm glad we're able to get there. But my question to you is, what is the, uh, process? Should we realize that two, three years down the road, it's working out very well, but we do need a bump to make sure that we cover it more holistically? Uh, do we have to go back out to a 218 vote to change it from a dollar twenty-six?
City Attorney, I'm, I'm sure if you want to weigh in, uh, yes, we would. Not a vote? You mean a vote for the public?
Yeah.
No, we're not even doing that now.
Okay, what is the process today? To get to a dollar twenty-six?
Notice and hearing.
I'm sorry, what?
Notice and hearing.
Notice and hearing. Okay. So this is, because that was one of the things when it came up, the question was, was it going to be a Prop 218 vote or what have you? So the bottom line is, um, we are going to be able to do that, but in that hearing, is it possible for us to let the public know that, that because it's the first time we do this, it may be something that we may have to have a public hearing later on or what have you to adjust it so that we can have the proper amount based on the realistic day-to-day responsibilities to, to enact this across the city?
Sure. We, we can let whomever is at the hearing know that, you know, someone will have to say it, but yeah.
Sure, sure. But obviously that, that information to, to decide whether or not we have enough, that this is bringing in enough would come from the department actually doing the work. But then the process would be the department would let, uh, the city attorney's office know, et cetera, so that we can institute down the road, another public hearing process, correct?
That's correct. We believe that the study that was done is sufficient to, uh, get this pro, get this fee underway. Uh, the exact amount of the cost won't be known until the, the program actually starts and we can look back and see exactly how much it costs.
But we're comfortable that, that with all due respect, we're not overcharging, right? We're comfortable, we're being conservative. The department's being conservative and saying, look, uh, this, this is probably the bare minimum we need to really get this off the ground and do it right.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that because I think whenever the public sees and hears about a fee or what have you, makes people nervous, but believe me, for a dollar twenty-six, I hope people just hold their breath, look around the streets and in the first 12 months or what have you, I think Angelino's, businesses, everybody's going to be really, really happy. And with all due respect, my district and Wendy Gruel's district, parts of our districts are but a neighboring city. I'm not going to mention any names, but we have had a rash of contractors who jump over the city line and drop that stuff in the city of Los Angeles because we are pretty good about getting out there when notified and picking it up. In other neighboring cities, they charge, uh, people for picking up bulky items or what have you. And here in the city of Los Angeles, I want to congratulate the department for figuring out a way to make it part of the city process. So again, I want to thank you for the wonderful work you've been doing so far and this is going to be, make a tremendous, tremendous difference. Everybody's going to really like the way Los Angeles looks tomorrow after we institute this fee. Once again, thank you, Tom Laban, for your leadership and to the department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardas. Next speaker is Mr. Wizar.
Thank you very much. And I'd want to echo Mr. Cardas in that this is a huge problem as well in my district. And I actually started with the support of the Public Works Department, a bulky item pickup program in different parts of my district on Saturdays where we put containers out, invite the public to come, put in the bulky items and every Saturday that we put them out, they're full. Uh, so it is an issue. So I want to thank everyone for getting to work on this, but the, the additional money that we're going to get from this is going to allow us to get more equipment and have trucks out there cruising the streets and allow more people to call in so we can be more responsive. So how do we distribute the trucks that are cruising around if some areas are more impacted at the other than others? And how do we determine that?
In addition to the trucks, Councilmember, there's also 25 drivers we're going to hire as part of this program, 25 drivers. And so the, the allocation of drivers will be on demand, if you will, with the exception of the sweeps that will be assigned based on areas in which we already know are problem areas. So we will assign, of those 25, let's say 10 will be assigned to sweeps, uh, based on knowledge we have of where the problem areas are. The rest will be on demand. You know, we, we have a very good computer system. Calls come in, we generate routes and they, they go out. So it's, it's on demand.
It's on demand. So you already have something in place that tells you where the highest needs are and you've identified it using whatever criteria, so?
Yes. And we're estimating about a thousand requests per day.
Okay, good. By the way, yesterday I reported a sofa on my block and it was picked up right away. So thank you for that. And, and then there is, there was a concern in the Budget and Finance Committee that there would be a, um, the landlord can use this as a pretext if the tenant doesn't pay their share of the fee. Is that a possibility, Mr. City Attorney, that, uh, the landlord could, uh, use this as a pretext for eviction to tenants who do not pay this fee?
The way that the fee is going to be set up now, uh, the way that it's set out in, in these reports and motions, that isn't a possibility because the landlord will, will be responsible for half the fee and the tenant will be responsible for half the fee paid to the city, not paid through the landlord.
Okay, so that they couldn't be used as a pretext and it's the landlord's responsibility?
It's, it's both the tenant and the landlord, yes.
It's both responsibility.
But the tenant portion of it will not go through the landlord. So that will not be, it, it can't be used against the tenant as a reason for eviction.
Okay.
But the tenant portion of it will go directly to the city.
Okay, what recourse? And I'm not advocating for any recourses, but what recourse would the city have on a tenant if, if the tenant does not pay?
Uh, the same recourse that we have against anyone who doesn't pay their full D W P bill.
And what is that?
We, uh...
Well, because you see, we, the recourse for D W P is we shut off your service. The recourse for this program is what? We're not, if you call us, we're not going to go pick up the bulky item, which is, I don't think which is a recourse, so.
That's correct. I, I guess whatever the re, and I don't know exactly what it is, but let's say it's not a type of service, let's say someone doesn't pay their full sanitation bill, um, they underpay by a dollar. I don't know what we do in that case.
Okay, so that, that's another one. The sanitation is not a direct service. We can't shut off your sanitation.
Right.
Right?
If I may, Councilmember, the benefit of, of this being on the D W, D W P bill is that D W P looks at all payments regardless of whether it's theirs or sanitation's to work with the fee payer to remind them and send delinquent notices that include any payment, not just their services. It also includes sanitation services. So they will have delinquency notices the same way.
Okay, thank.
And Councilmember, if I might add, remember it's being divided in half so they, each side's only going to see 64 cents per month on their bill, which is pretty insignificant.
Great. Thank you. I think this is excellent. I, I, when does it start?
October.
October 1st.
October 1st of this year. And so I would expect the streets of Bohi, El Sereno, Highland Park, areas in my district that see a big problem with this, they're going to be less bulky items there because people are going to be calling more, there's going to be immediate service, although I got my sofa picked up within a day. Um, and there's going to be more trucks cruising around too. Because I was actually thinking of my own Saturday bulk item pickup program that where we put the containers, I was going to put some of my own, um, discretionary funds to provide overtime to make that possible. But I think this is a more systematic way of going about it rather than us having, how do we deal with this problem? And probably have 15 solutions if we, the council members are left up to their own devices to find a solution to this.
We'll take your money until October, until the program goes into effect.
I think we will do that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Laban?
Thank you very much, members. Thank you all for this here. There's some, Ms. Perry's point and that, uh, others that have discussed it there on, if we had, if it said a enclosed complex that has paid staff, over 1,100 units is exempt, what effect does that have on that as opposed to naming a facility? Because I named two facilities that happen to be in my district. I'd name more if I knew, yes?
The reason those two facilities are named is because the city is already aware that they meet the exemption requirements. Any other complex that meets those exemption requirements, regardless of the number of units, could also apply for an exemption and I expect be granted an exemption.
Okay, so members, is that, they all hear that there? I put those units in there, described it. So if there's opportunities in your district, bring it forth. And who do they bring it forth to? The Bureau of Sanitation? Bureau of Sanitation will review and then recommend an exemption, okay, on that. So if you're comfortable, I'd like to ask for an I vote to go forward. This is a big step to make a big difference. When we transformed the sanitation from, uh, packer loaders where there was a staff on the back of a truck and, and one driver in it, a lot of bulky items got picked up. But we went to a containerized system, it changed the world as we know it today in our streets. This is an opportunity to change that and get back and make a giant difference. So I ask for an I vote and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Our next and final speaker is Ms. Perry.
Um, um, thanks, Mr. Laban. And I was just wondering if you could just review the high points one more time about applying for an exemption because on a going forward basis, it's a good educational opportunity. There may be, uh, developers who are doing adaptive reuse and doing their infrastructure plans and may want to vacate alleys and streets and connect more buildings so that they can become again, you know, develop their own, uh, community and, and meet most of the criteria here in the motion, uh, dedicated trash service on site, self-contained community, uh, private collection at least twice a week, uh, outreach method to tenants and then no significant number of bulky, uh, items, uh, in or about the alleys, the sidewalks or the streets. I, I think I hit the, hit most of the points.
Do that, maybe on a friendly amendment, ask that the Bureau develop a written, uh, brochure that you could share with people online as well on what to do, uh, why the fee is important and if they wanted to try to be exempt from the fee, how they go about it. And I'm sure that would be...
Send it to the building owner management, building owners, it's B O M A, building owners, management, association, apartment association, um, any sort of development or real estate association so that as people are even designing projects, it might actually encourage them, you know, to design their projects in a different way.
Right.
And, and we agree with that. I mean, it's very similar to what we do now with the sewer service charge, so we have no problem with doing that.
Great. So we're doing that. Friendly amendment. You got that, Mr. Clerk? Okay. Members, I ask for an I vote and I thank you for this discussion and, uh, when we all do it, let's get out together in our districts on one day on a Thursday and see who can be the real king or queen of bulky item pickup once we get it resolved. On a Thursday in November, uh, we should all get together and have, uh, equal, uh, services. Thank you.
Get ready to rumble. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Laban. And on that note, that is our last speaker. If we can open the roll.
And Mr. President, just for the record, Mr. Parks had moved the Budget and Finance Committee report.
That is correct. We do have three reports on this. If there's no objection to that, I'll second that. Are they mutually exclusive reports?
I believe the Budget and Finance was more comprehensive.
Okay. With that, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
All right, that is approved. Fourth with without objection. If we can take up all the, the remaining items together, they are called special for cards from the public?
That would be items 39, 43 and 49.
I have a card on 37. Did we already address that?
37 was actually continued to May 1st.
My mistake. Uh, Mr. Zuma Dog, if you'd like to speak on 39, 43 and 49.
Yes, five, oh, by the way, I need a Spanish translator. Uh, Eric, Eric, before I start, I need five minutes. Oh, I need five minutes because no announcement was made. Also a Spanish translator? Can I have a Spanish translator and double the time, please? Eric, Mr. President?
Please address the council as a whole, sir.
Uh, I'd like to say that we had Spanish translation and you doubled people's time. I would like my translation as well in double time, but let, we'll talk about that next time, civil rights violation. Um, regarding track maps, yeah, you can keep laughing. Regarding track maps, I've been talking about it a lot. They're approved in violation of many different vacancy rates and affordable housing requirements and your, these types of things. So I'm very proud to announce and very pleased to announce, ladies and gentlemen, Neighborhood Council, a warning and alert from Zuma Dog. There's a motion today. L.A. Municipal Code provides city agencies with authority to appeal certain entitlement requests. For example, the right to appeal a tentative track map decision of council states that any interested party adversely affected by proposed subdivisions, known as track maps, may appeal the lower body's track map. So neighborhood councils are taking an active role, it says here, in the motion in planning and land use decisions in the communities they represent. Currently, the city of Los Angeles, California does not allow neighborhood councils the right to appeal the same entitlements afforded to other city agencies. So all this time you've been having track maps, you've been building them in violation of cities and city charter with vacancy rates, affordable housing requirements and all these things, and they have not been allowed to protest like other agencies. Zuma Dog says False Claims Act time, y'all. Neighborhood councils, please call 311. Please call 311 and ask, say, I would like to participate in my neighborhood council. Please tell me what district I live in. If you give them your address, they'll tell you what district is, they'll tell me your council member is and you can ask them when the next neighborhood council meeting is.
None of these are track maps? Sir, none of these are track maps? These, these three items, none of them are track maps? If you can please bring them to what they are. That was continued.
Oh, why'd, why'd you let me waste all my time talking about it? Well, anyway, that's the thing about track maps, y'all. Let's see what else we got also. We got special event fees and I'd like to say, we've, I've talked for about a year on special event fee waiver abuse and I'm very proud to say that after being on record, I am seeing the special event fee waiver abuse trimmed back tremendously. event fee waiver abuse trimmed back tremendously. I can barely even find an item of shady fraud, waste, and abuse anymore. So that's a good thing. So let's give council credit. It's not like they come out and announce, oh, Zuma Dog, you're right, we're not allowed to put these through anymore, because you called us on it to put it on record, so we're not going to be able to, you know, give all these charities, business tax relief breaks. They don't come out and make that announcement. You just have to watch day after day and see all the shady fraud, waste, and abuse special event fees no longer come up anymore. Thank you, city council. If I've done one thing, it's gotten you to enforce the special event fee waivers. Thank you, Zuma Dog and Zap. I'll be running for mayor in 09.
That closes our public comment on those ones. If we can open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Sorry, sir, did you have a card on one of those items?
10 ayes.
We've already finished the cards that we had, sir, on any of the special event items. We'll have somebody come talk to you. That finishes our...
Hard yet, but thanks.
Oh, that already had a public hearing. Thank you very much. It required somebody to reopen public hearing. Just to reiterate, all items either have a public hearing in committee or in council. If they've already had it in committee, they don't have it in council, it doesn't trigger it, but thank you. We'll make sure somebody comes over and chat with you.
Comment?
We already had public comment at the outset, sir. Thank you. If, are there any announcements at this time?
There are.
Okay, if there's no objections. All right, sir, we could public comment. We're about to lose form at 1 o'clock. We have people who are excused, but go ahead, sir, please.
Mr. President and council members, thank you very much for letting me speak. I can only say that I'm back. My friends and fellow coworkers will know what that statement means. I've lived and worked in this city for most of my life. I retired from the city last year after 46, over 46 years of service. And hold my time on this one. It's kind of like homecoming here today, because I worked on certainly the bulky item project. I know Perry Abasi very well. In fact, he started out in the Recycling and Waste Reduction Division. I believe he started out in that division. He made a great choice. And I've always said to people that the city of L.A. is a great place to work, because you can find your niche, you can find things you like to do. And there's a variety of jobs out there that if you don't like one thing, you can go to another. And I certainly found my niche. I enjoyed working for this city. I didn't want to retire. I think the good Lord kicked me in the rear end and told me to get out and enjoy life, and I'm doing that. Anyway, that brings me here today. I enjoy the benefits of a senior bus pass, $12 a year, or no, $12 a month. And I'll say this, we have a very excellent public transportation in this city and county. The Metro Rail is fabulous. You can set your watch to basically when those trains are supposed to be at a station with their arrivals and departures. The bus system, however, could use a little tweaking.
You have 15 seconds, sir. The clock right there.
Anyway, during the Easter break, I had an occasion to take my grandchildren out to the Santa Monica Pier, all in public transportation. My uncle owned a fishing and boat business out there many years ago, back in the 40s and 50s, and I wanted them to see a little bit of that. Can I, Captain, more time?
I'm sorry, we can't, sir. We have to be very fair to everybody, and we had actually hundreds of people that were here earlier. So if you can give us the comments, we'd be happy to look at them, and Sergeant Arms will take them. So thank you. Now it's time for public announcements, colleagues. Do we have any announcements, colleagues? I'm sorry, sir. Well, we will look at that, but we have to keep to the rules. That's why we have that clock there to help people manage their time. I'm sure some of the council members would be happy to speak individually as well. Any announcements, colleagues?
Yes, sir.
If not, any adjourning motions? Okay, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions. I'd like to recognize Ms. Perry.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I know that many of you spoke in memory of Congresswoman Juanita Melinda McDonald yesterday, and I wish I had been able to do the same yesterday, but I wanted to just say a few words about what an extraordinary and accessible and down-to-earth, hands-on Congresswoman she was, and how much I shall miss her. She and her sister worship at Second Baptist Church, which is a church located in my district where these services will be held this coming Monday. And I will give everyone more information probably no later than Friday. And I know that it will be a wonderful service, filled with celebration and wonderful stories about how she has affected so many people's lives. And I wanted to also add my words that I will miss her and miss seeing her there on the times when I had the opportunity to speak and to look up in the congregation and see she and her sister sitting there with their beautiful hats and suits on, either nodding, mostly nodding in approval, and I was always grateful for that. I'm going to miss her. I also wanted to adjourn in memory of Eric B. Thomas, who passed away from a heart attack on April the 9th. He was an active member of New Delta Chapter of UCLA and the Kappa Delta Sigma Southern California Alumni Chapter. He was a devoted member of the New Hope Lodge, number 35, in Long Beach, in which he received the very distinguished title of Master Mason. This beloved Mason and Sigma brother will be missed but never forgotten. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Linda Marie Scott, a one-time resident of the Ninth District, who passed away same day, April the 9th. She was born May 12, 1949, in Shreveport, Louisiana. And as a young adult, she and her family moved to South L.A., where they were very active in their community. She later moved to the Crenshaw District, where she lived until she passed, and she, too, will be missed but never forgotten.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wesson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members. I'd like to adjourn on behalf of Council Member Parks for Ms. Dakota Staton, who passed away on Tuesday, April 10th. She was 76 years old. Ms. Staton was a highly regarded jazz vocalist, known for her 1957 album, The Late Late Show. She began singing in Harlem and was discovered at a nightclub called Baby Grand. She was discovered by Capitol Record producer Dave Kavanaugh, signed to their label, and her first recording was a single release in 1954 called What Do You Know About Love? She also had another album that came out called Dynamite in 1958, that reached number 22 on the album charts. She was born in June 3, 1930. She survived by her brother, who's a saxophonist, Fred, who lives in New York City.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, colleagues, as well for the commemoration of Denim Day. We will all be in session next, this Friday, which is April the 27th, here in City Council Chambers. Have a great afternoon, and we will see you then.